Busy as you've been.
You can start. John, you can start.
I was just waiting for a shout from Nate. We will start the City of Elza Plan Board meeting for June 5th, 2024. Can I have introductions from Plan Board, please?
Mark Rich, board member.
Vince Messer, board member.
John DeLeo, Chair.
Rick Lyles, Vice Chair.
Mike Kangie, Board Member.
John Calafano, Board Member.
Staff introductions, please.
Matt Williams, City Planner.
Robert Grant, Code Enforcement.
Thomas Cameron, Fire Inspector.
Bobby Roberts, Deputy E.
Thank you. From the back of the...
Actually, item number two, adoption minutes, we're gonna table that. They're not ready. We need to vote. Can I have a motion to table the...
Motion to table, second.
Second. The motion, second, had all in favor. And actually, let's see. Vincenzo voting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he's a crucial member.
Why don't... Has that gone to the council yet, then?
I mean, it was an alternate anyway, so he voted a voting member tonight.
Yeah. Okay, item number three, and actually, it's down on the agenda of preliminary plan, but it's actually a sketch plan review of a major use site plan and major subdivision plan entitled WL Properties LLC. Applicant owner WL Properties LLC. The proposal is to create a multifamily development with a total of 150 units. The subject property is an approximately 121.8 acre parcel located at the end of Eastward Lane, tax map 22, lot 13, in the commercial, limited residential, and resource protection zoning districts. Is there someone here representing WL? I was gonna say, I hope so.
I think I just mentioned for the public that sketch plan means no decisions are made tonight.
Yeah, okay.
Do you want to hold it? They don't need to see me.
I mean, if any folks are here...
Would like to see it, I can turn it around on a chair.
Specifically for this development, a sketch plan is just an overview of what the development is. There's no votes on anything concerning this development tonight. Can you introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Shelley Luzott. I'm a civil engineer for artifacts. I'm here representing the developer, Scott Pelletier, for WL Properties. And like the Chair said, the project is on a 120-some-odd acre parcel of land off of Eastward Lane. And we were here a year ago with a preliminary plan, and we had to do some changes, to avoid some wetlands, and so we're back again. And Matt thought it would be a good idea to go back to sketch plans since so many things have changed. The main entrance has not changed. The differences really are, we eliminated a few of the laundry room spaces, and each one of these buildings is going to have either their, like, townhouse units there with either four, six, or eight at this point. We've gone to eight in one. And it would be accessed off a main drive with several smaller groups of buildings in smaller unit areas. And so what we had to do from the last plan was avoid some extra wetlands that we were crossing that now, at this point, they're... Trying to get a permit for impacting wetlands is going to cost a lot of money and also be very difficult to obtain, so we tried to avoid it as much as possible. And we added a few units to our last proposal, I think 20-something. And that would bring it to 150, which would be built over a number of years. There's a lot of units there.
Matt, why don't you put that down?
Yeah, don't hold it the whole time. Just us trying to come up with a summary. This is all going to be, you know, public water and sewer. The roads are 22 feet wide with shoulders and a five-foot concrete sidewalk on one side. Each of the buildings will have a sprinkler system and will be able to be entered by the fire department by knock boxes on each one. It does currently exceed the threshold for needing a Site Location of Development Act permit for the DEP, and I'm working on that currently. That won't be submitted for another couple of weeks. But we're just back here to kind of reintroduce the project to everybody and get ideas of if anyone has any concerns or questions for us. We will definitely listen.
Are these all meant to be two-bedroom units? Two-bedroom, one-bath, or what?
Two-bedroom, one-bath. As I was talking to Scott Pelletier today, some of the ones with the walkout basements, he would like to do a third bedroom to attract a different, you know, group of... Have some variety, but at minimum of two bedrooms.
Do you have a sense of what the square footage would be on those?
If I had the plan in front of me, I could kind of come up with it. I think they're probably 1,200 square feet.
For both two- and three-bedroom, or...
No, I didn't calculate the basement space, so I'm not really sure, but...
I can read off the plan, what it says.
I just... What does the distance, the dimensions say on that?
Yeah, so for the four-bedroom unit, for the four-bedroom building, it looks like the units themselves will be 36 feet by 32 feet. And there's the room for the utility room on the end. And then for the six-unit building, this one doesn't break it down like that. I actually think it's the same size, it'll just be 36 by 32, but three buildings, residential units, and then the utility building.
So it's probably close to 1,000 on two floors and then, you know, 200, 300 in the basement level. I don't have a floor plan of that available at this point. But there are a similar floor plan that he is building currently in Old Town, I believe.
Now, I mean, thinking back to when you folks originally came in, you kind of alluded to it in your description of water and sewer going in Eastward Lane, and that was gonna be a challenge, getting access to that. Is it still challenging?
I don't think it's a challenge. It's a right-of-way, so the access and the utilities there were put in by the residents of Eastward Lane, so it's just a matter of, like, making sure that everybody's aware of what's happening and getting the people in that, you know, in that area that are connected to know what's going on. I think Eastward Lane is owned by the bowling alley property, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I mean, that property has changed hands recently.
It has, and we discussed that at the meeting about who to contact, and I haven't put that to the developer yet, to get in touch with them, because it is a different person than when we were here before.
One thing I bring that up is... To what extent, or if any, is Eastward Lane gonna be improved or maintained with 150 units behind you if you don't have any requirement or to maintain that first 1,500 feet roughly, or however long Eastward Lane is?
Yeah, it's... The intention is for him to resurface it and do whatever improvements are necessary on that to make it so it's passable, you know, acceptable to the city roadway. We do need to get into some kind of maintenance agreement with the owners of the properties so that everything... Everyone knows who's taking care of what and when and how.
Maintenance and plowing.
Yeah, yeah. Because the water and sewer does go up to the tennis center. It ends at the tennis center. And then beyond that, there's a... Part of the access road is on a right-of-way that is owned by a different adjacent neighbor, I believe. I think it's a different property owner.
And originally, I see you still have in the mail building... I think originally, there was planned to be a mail building and also a building for kids to gather for the school bus.
Yes.
I'll mention that. I'll mention this again, that, okay, somebody needs to check with the post office in the school to make sure that they're agreeable to the school bus going into the...
Right.
...private property.
Yep. And I'm not sure what kind of documentation the planning board would need, a letter from the superintendent or someone who handles it, how...
Yeah, I mean, if you reach out to the superintendent or her deputy, they'd be able to put you in contact with...
Okay.
...the right people.
I mean, certainly would be best if the school bus did go up into that rather than stopping on Route 1 and picking kids up at the end of Eastward Lane on Route 1.
Yes, busy out there. And plus, it's a fair distance, so we'd want to have some kind of shelter anyway, even if they didn't come in.
And you mentioned that some of these buildings, I mean, they're gonna be washer-dry, laundry facility...
It's a shared facility for each building, and if it's a four-unit building, then sometimes they're sharing the adjacent one in the six-unit building, so they don't all have a laundry facility in there.
And it doesn't look like you're proposing to have any type of open areas for recreation or a building for meetings or social events or anything like that?
There hasn't been any discussion of that. I know, you know, there certainly couldn't be landscaped areas for those type of things if, you know, outdoor gathering locations, but no structures have been proposed for that.
And will there be sidewalks throughout the development?
On the main road, the spur parking lots are wide enough so that you don't have to have a sidewalk, and they're not super long, but on the main, longer roads that are getting you into and out of it, they will be sidewalk and curb with the concrete surface.
Are there sidewalks on Resort Way?
Mm-hmm. I don't believe so. There's no sidewalks on Eastward Lane either.
And just for the sidewalks, you know, it was potentially a discussion that the developer could have with the owners. Near the end of Eastward Lane, if they repair and upgrade Eastward Lane itself, then the other owners may pitch in to finish the sidewalk, because this ends up their property line, but then if they're gonna fix Eastward Lane for everybody to use, then maybe the other owners could put in the sidewalk to get it down to Route 1.
It certainly seems like the sidewalk to get down to Route 1 would be called for. I mean, and it's kind of silly the way to have sidewalks throughout and nothing to get actually out of the developers home.
Right. Oh, just to mention, there is on this one, like, a workshop garage building at the end of the main entrance there that he'll use to store materials and stuff during the construction that could potentially be, you know, renovated and used at some point for, like, a gathering area or for additional storage for residents, or I'm not really sure, that's kind of unclear at this time, but if it's built for, you know, for that use now, it's not gonna be taken down in the future.
That's all I've got for now.
I would just say that, you know, my biggest concern for this development, the size of this development and where it's located, would be the traffic circulation and traffic generation, all that. And I look back at the, some of the prior stuff, and, you know, the... It went from 142 units to whatever, to whatever, now back to 150. And I noticed that most of the traffic analysis that had been done earlier, I guess for that middle number, but it was done for 142 units anyway. So the point is that the traffic analysis that was done is reasonably close, but not the same as this. So the point is that that needs to be updated, okay? And I think it needs to be comprehensive in the sense of really looking at intersection operations with Route 1, okay? And then probably upstream and downstream intersections as well, because that's kind of the way you do traffic impact studies, right? Is look not only at your major entrance, but if there is upstream and downstream impacts as well, so, you know. And the turning movements and how you figure out the turning movements becomes pretty critical, again, given where these intersections are and the traffic on Route 1 and all that. So it needs to be pretty comprehensive, and I would just say that there needs to be a practical look at it as well. We get a lot of proposals here that say, you know, here's 123, you know, computer output from Synchro or whatever, and like, and the answer must be in there somewhere. Well, you know, you need to kind of flesh out where the answers are hidden in there and what the real relevance of them are. So, for example, you know, with figuring out the turning movements is important because you may say, gee, I really need to have a turning lane or something like that. So those kinds of things need to be looked at and evaluated, and it's non-trivial.
Yeah.
Not particularly hard, but non-trivial.
Our traffic engineer, last year, I tried to get her to attend the meeting, and she was unavailable for graduate, because of the graduation, so at the next meeting, I'll try to get her to come to answer any questions, and I'll make sure that the numbers are updated.
And hopefully, by the next meeting, by the time you get here for the preliminary, you know, that analysis and so forth will have been done.
Right.
And we'll have some recommendations from you about, well, what does this mean for traffic on Route 1 and backing up and safety and all that?
Yeah.
And you all did a pretty reasonable review in the sense that you did a crash diagram or crash history and all that, which is great, okay? But the question is, does the traffic that's generated here likely result in more crashes, given the kind of crashes that we had? So, a lot of stuff.
Yeah, and it's a particularly unusual situation in that location because it... Your traffic is sort of funneled to all come down that way from the triangle now, so...
I totally agree with that.
I don't know, there is no other, you know, there is no other entrance. We've researched the options and hit many dead ends, so, I mean, it seems to be this is the only way to get in and out.
And I can believe that. And the key is, say, okay, given that, what do we do?
I just wanted to make sure. Shelley mentioned that they have looked into even buying more land to potentially create that extra access, but this wasn't reasonable.
And that's fine, but that needs to be part of the traffic analysis or the conclusions relative to traffic, is like, you know, we tried to do this and we simply can't.
Right.
I think at one point in the previous discussion, we threw out the idea of connecting through the road that comes out between Napa and Credit Now. I don't know if you folks ever did pursue that to see if that's a possibility.
Is that the one, Matt?
I think it's...
I think they...
A little workway, I think.
They were looking at the one right off of Boardwalk Way.
That's the one.
I think it's the one between Napa and Credit Now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Essentially, the owners said that they weren't interested in selling their property, so...
But in this traffic study, and I believe we set some parameters on it last time, but that the study area should extend at least to Bayrick Street on Route 1 and to Key Bank on High Street.
Yeah, I think we just asked them to look at those intersections in particular, the light at both those places.
Well, it'd be three altogether.
Four. Oh, all by Key Bank, yeah.
Three on High Street.
The three on High and then, yeah.
The upstream and downstream intersections that are impacted, basically the way, you can be examined. So you're gonna have to run Synchro and get 4 million, you know, pages of output to wait through. Just saying. That was a hyperbole there.
Did I hear you say you've got eight-unit-sized building? Those are not depicted on your plan?
Yeah, there are some in the actual plan layout, but not as a detail, like a block out of the plan. I can add that to it. It's just basically the same repetitive duplex, like, two and two, or, you know.
I've got a question. Just recently, I talked to someone who lives in a fairly new subdivision, it's duplexes. And this doesn't have anything to do with our requirements, I believe, but that one of the first duplexes, this fellow moved into one of these first duplexes that went up. And he said he could sit in his living room, and his living room and the neighbor's living room were side by side, and he could hear a conversation in the other person, a normal conversation in the other person's living room, because apparently all there was was sheetrock with nothing else. He did happen to mention it to the developer, who then upgraded the rest of the units, and he actually moved to another building. And in the new building, they put up soundboard or whatever they put up, and couldn't hear the neighbor. So, I mean, I think we've just assumed that people do that, but apparently they don't.
Yeah, well, I can sympathize, because I, my office is very similar. We have a gym next to my office, so you can hear ropes and things banging on the walls. It's crazy. So I do know that between every second unit, there's a two-hour firewall, as would be required in between. I would hope that he does some kind of sound editing. He's built many, many of these, so I don't know the details of that at the moment, but I can certainly find out, to be curious at least.
Just going back for a second to this traffic analysis and so forth, that should include, at this point, you know, making sure that you have current counts, okay? Because you have... There's a table in the old one, okay, that goes up for a certain time, and there may or may not be new data available or additional data. And the build-out, you know, they did an analysis for build-out dates and so forth, okay? And the build-out that was used here in this old report was 2025, which seems like it should be, you know, a couple more years down the line.
Yes.
To be more... And so that changes all the, you know, all the volumes that are on existing streets.
Yeah. Noted.
Noted.
So you make mention of a two-hour firewall in between the units. Are you sprinkling the buildings?
Yes.
So the buildings will be sprinkled?
Yes.
All the units. Now, the other question I have for you, each individual unit is in and of itself. There's not another unit above another unit, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
They're true townhouse units.
Any questions?
I could be reading this all wrong, but it looks like when you get down towards the end of the development, I can't read the unit numbers, but it looks like it's approaching a floodplain, 100-year floodplain?
I don't think the floodplain is there. There's a zone line for the town that goes from commercial to limited residential, which is in the shoreline zone. But we're some 1,200 to 1,400 feet away from Card Brook and higher. I don't believe it's over that.
Closest thing to the floodplain, right?
Yeah, on the stormwater drainage plan, you can see the 100-year floodplain outline of the development is pretty far from that.
Okay. The thing is, I was looking at your hydrant locations that you have proposed, and I understand what you're proposing. One of the things I like to look at is the travel distance between hydrants. The one that's at the corner of... Where is that? Brookview Drive and Reese Way, and then you go all the way down to the right, and there's nothing in between. Are you okay with that?
We talked about it in TRT for her to correct it on the preliminary plan, not on the sketch.
Okay, because we're gonna add one right there.
Oh, yes, I've already advised her which chapter to go to, which is 18.5 for hydrants.
Sorry, folks.
She go to chapter 18, 18.5 for hydrants, and then it has the distant locations, the requirements that's gonna be needed for this. So she's gonna go, once she dismits her preliminary, she's gonna update a few of the notes, and hydrants is one of them.
Okay. Good to know.
The other thing, in terms of circulation and so forth, you know, this is basically, once you go in on whatever the street is there, you know, there's no way back out. You come back, you have to go around in there somewhere and come back out. And it may be appropriate to have, to think about some signage that basically says, you know, no...
No exit.
Yeah, right. No through way or whatever. And the fact that you have kind of a, where your dumpster pad is or whatever, is a convenient spot for someone who does go in and, kids, oops, bad on me, and then turn around right there. So that's a good idea, but you also probably need to have a sign very close to that that says, you know, go beyond this and you're going into, you know, the development.
We also talked about having two, maybe three, extra other dumpster locations near the end of each one of the clusters of buildings, not inside the... So opportunities.
I was just thinking about it in terms of the opportunity for a turnaround.
Right.
Okay.
There's a, as you come in on the right-hand side, there's a gravel access that goes to a property up behind the bowling alley, and while that hasn't been...
Oh, right.
While that has not currently been updated, it's very narrow and unused. We could also make that a turnaround in case somebody decided that they didn't even want to go up far enough to see where they were going, if that's something that could be. Because we have to leave the curb cut there anyway, because it's an easement for the people.
Right. Yeah, so just, you know, think about it and see what you can do.
Yeah.
I'm kinda glad you brought up dumpsters. I mean, have you figured out how many dumpsters are actually spread out through the property, or is it gonna be one centralized location?
That first location is, I think it's designed to have, to hold four, like, eight-yard or 10-yard dumpsters.
We discussed six or eight-yard dumpsters.
Six or eight, yeah. And so I think at least two more of those, not dumpsters.
I bring this up because, I mean, just recently, and I'm not saying every apartment complex is like this, but there's two specific ones that I go by on a regular basis, and they do a horrendous job of emptying their dumpsters. And, I mean, there's trash all over the place, and not necessarily hidden from view. I mean, I don't know if that's something that Code can get into, or...
Yeah, you gotta call Code next time you see them.
What's that?
Gonna call Robert next time you see him.
Okay.
I expect...
Because, I mean, you know, I mean, these two particular places, I mean, it's disgusting. And it's bad enough that, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if there's rat problems.
Yeah, it becomes a problem when you don't have room to put the trash in the dumpster and you just put it on the ground. I expect that to also have, like, a concrete block exterior wrap so that you, you know, and it has a gate so you can't see it. That doesn't mean people aren't gonna leave stuff there, but we definitely need more opportunities for those dumpsters.
The unthinkable, coming into main entrance and seeing a huge dumpster facility.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll tuck them in in a, sort of inconspicuous but accessible place.
Thank you. Anything else? No? And I will open the public hearing if anybody here has anything to say or comment or question. Apparently not. I will close the public hearing, and considering that there's no action taken on this item...
It's done.
It's done. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is final plan review of a major subdivision entitled The Village Phase 2 for applicant owner Villageway LLC. Rosel created 14-lot cluster subdivision. The subject property is an approximately 140-acre lot located Villageway, tax map 46, lot 19, in the drinking water zoning district. Is there someone here representing the owner?
Stephen Salisbury.
Stephen Salisbury.
All yours, Steve.
Well, I believe I addressed all the comments that we received from last month's meeting. Came out of TRT. Updated the traffic report to reflect the number of, the correct number of units. The covenants on the plan now match the covenants that we put in the application. And we changed the lot numbers so they are sequenced from phase one to phase two, so there's not duplicate lot numbers, even though it's technically a different subdivision.
I appreciate that.
That was, it was a good comment, it was a good idea. And that was, that's the essence of the updates in the application.
And I noticed you updated the figures from the traffic study.
Yes.
I have nothing else.
So Steve, the question I have on the Village Loop Way.
Yes.
Is, as that goes, that's proposed, will the, where it says future road, will that also be Village Loop Way? Comes back down around?
I would presume so.
Okay.
Any issues from the staff?
No, I brought the cross out that they had a snow storage on your TRT report, so that is actually completed. And there's just a note from the water company that when the project is completed, they'll just need as-built for the water line. Because I think it's, like, they'll have to see what the final construction, engineering is after construction. Other than that, nothing for the plan itself.
Oh, in the TRT, nothing, see, I didn't happen to look on the site plan, but add snow storage locations to the plan.
I just said that, I forgot to cross that out, but they have on Haley Ward Plan that they provided as the snow storage.
Any issues from the fire department? Codes all have it?
Yeah.
Any questions from the board?
Oh, actually, there was a comment from the public tonight, I went to the site visit for this project. Steve, I don't know if it would be possible to first sort of access to the common area so that there's, you know, the development knows where they have public access to, so they're not kind of people's yards. Would it be possible either to put a, something in the deed restriction, or maybe a sign that allows the public access to the common area that's between Lot 9, you know, next to Lot 9 in the development? Yeah, that's the intent. There's, I guess, like a note or a sign that lets people know that that's where public access comes from.
Yep, and we got a little woods road that goes down to Leech Field that was intended for the access.
Now, over the public hearing, if there's anybody here that would like to make a comment or ask a question? Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman. This isn't really commenting on this project, since I just arrived here. I think I'm gonna raise this issue now, and I think it's a very valid one. I was working, cooking supper between 5:00 and 5:30 at night, planning to watch this meeting on Spectrum in my kitchen on the television. And it's not on Spectrum tonight, it's not on Channel 5, 7, or 1303, and I want to know why. And I think since it isn't, it may be on Zoom, which is garbage. I don't do Zoom by picture. And maybe it's on Facebook, which I think is an absolute abomination. I don't know. For years, these projects have been on, your meetings have been on Spectrum, either 5, 7, or 1303. Sometimes they've been late getting on, but it wasn't on at 56 Hancock Street when I left. What time is it now? When I left about 10 minutes ago to come over here. I think this basic hearing should be terminated and continued and sent on, for this matter and for any other things on the agenda, to a future date, because there is no availability for people to watch this if they want to. And that's basically what I have to say. And probably I know what you're gonna do, which is absolutely nothing, but I think it should be raised, because there is no reason why this isn't on Spectrum tonight. And I think we're gonna get an explanation in a few seconds. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go to the mic.
Okay.
Nate Burkard, City of Elswood IT. I just want to let you know that this one's on me. I forgot to hit the button to send it to Spectrum. I have now turned it on, and it is working as we speak, so. Any other questions?
Just want to mention where it is also publicly available to view live.
Oh, it's also publicly available to view live on YouTube right now, it's streaming. It is streaming on Facebook Live as well, as well as the Zoom link that was advertised on the city notices on our website as well. So there's currently three streaming platforms you can watch this meeting live on. And it will also be available for viewing on YouTube, recording whenever you want, right after the meeting is completed, so.
So I understand correctly that there was a button that needed to be pushed to push it over to Spectrum?
There's a button needing to be pushed, and I forgot to hit it, so I take full responsibility on that, so. Yep. And it's going now, so.
Thank you.
I have one question, which has nothing to do with this meeting tonight, but.
Speak to me.
Did you ever get on YouTube, the, and maybe the meeting was never held, the finance committee meeting this past Friday? Because I looked as late as sometime Monday, I think, and I couldn't find it on YouTube.
Yeah, so those meetings are posted after the fact. Now that I'm actually working with a special finance team the city manager put together, so I haven't, I'm normally the person that uploads them, but my duties have shifted recently, so we're getting to those later than we normally would, but if it's not there, we'll definitely follow up on it to make sure it gets there. So the recording does exist, it just needs to be posted, so.
Okay. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, man.
Thank you. Anything else I can help, help out? All right?
Thanks, Nate.
Yep.
Okay, Ray?
Be okay depending what they do.
We're gonna continue on with the meeting, it's being broadcast now. The public hearing is still open for discussion on the Village Phase Two. If there's no one else, I'll close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the board?
Make a motion for the, to approve the final plan of the major subdivision entitled The Village Phase Two for applicant slash owner Villageway LLC.
Any other questions? Hold the panel. Don't want to suppose. Moving on to item number five. Final plan review of a major use site.
You're welcome.
Major use site development and major subdivision entitled Beals Avenue Multi-Family Housing Development. Applicant-owner LB Elsworth LLC.
Talk to you later.
Proposal is to build a 36-unit, downtown mid-end development comprised of two-story buildings. Each building would have four or six units. The subject property is approximately 11.318 a lot located Beals Avenue. Tax map 135, Lot 44, in the neighborhood zoning district. Who's here representing the applicant?
Rainey Cordermars, project manager with Head of Fine Engineering.
Dan Black with the development team.
Sorry, I'm Gabe Tomasulo, I'm the project, the architect on the project.
Turn the fan off, just, because I know we had a problem with, yeah, just turn it off. Just to remind you folks, sometimes the people in the back have a problem, they're facing us, so try to speak up as loud as you can, turn the air commission off. It might get a little warm, but hopefully it'll help you people hear the presentation a lot better. What's yours, gentlemen?
Okay, just a few updates since our meeting last month. We had submitted an updated cover letter, updated financial capacity statements, and a few small changes. I'm just taking into consideration the comments of the board, comments from the TRT team. And then the next round of TRT comments that we got back were pretty small changes, so we didn't submit an updated site plan on those, but we have made a few changes, added a few notes and clarifications. A few things I think still need to be discussed, one of those being sidewalk material. And there's still a comment on there that we discussed at the last meeting about adding a right-turn-only sign coming out of the development that my understanding was the consensus was based on the traffic engineer Diane Morabito's feedback and talking with the board that that was not gonna be incorporated. So if we understood that wrong, or if I understood that wrong, we can pivot on that. But I think that's basically a no, no major changes, you know, layout changes or change to units.
Just discuss a little bit further the change so that the fire truck doesn't go onto the neighboring property.
Sure. Yeah, one comment that was received was showing the fire truck and kind of pulling the sidewalk back just a few feet and removing one light, and that just provided some better traffic movement for the, for the fire truck. So that's a change that, again, is not reflected in the plan that you have in front of you, but it is a change that we've made. No, is the intent that it doesn't go onto the, because that's where the pavement for the road is. I think it might be, but the road is, the actual edge of pavement is right under the blue line.
I would, yeah, just differentiate that then and show like a greater right-of-way, if that's pavement. Covered by Beals Avenue, right? Full right-of-way.
Yeah, but that's the right-of-way line that was provided by the surveyor. So I don't know.
I would still, I'd still make the, to get the sidewalk back to the property line, figure that first way to the fire truck and come in a little bit wider there.
Just have them sweep a little wider. Okay, yeah, we can do that.
That was okay with you, right, Tom?
I think I asked folks last time, correct me if I'm wrong, what is the square footage for the two-bedroom and three-bedroom?
I think I mentioned this at the last meeting as well, but the two-bedroom units are roughly 1,000 square feet, and the three-bedroom units are roughly 1,200 square feet. And that's square footage measured from the inside face of exterior wall, so that's actual usable square footage.
In talking about the financing, which is a little more detailed than what we normally say, is it safe to say that, it seems like, I mean, you have a letter from Main Housing and I think Genesis, both of which say that, you know, we're willing to be involved with this, but we can't guarantee until you do all your due process. It seems like Main Housing, is Main Housing the, kind of the last stop that kind of gives you your final okay after they determine you've got all your ducks in a row?
In this case, I would say it's the commercial bank, so Bank or Savings Bank, we have a letter from them as well. That would be sort of the last threshold, particularly because of the pre-sale condition that they would set on the units.
But basically, I mean, you're gonna have to, I mean, you have Bank or Savings, you have Main Housing, you have Genesis. Were there any others, I think, in the initial application, maybe one or two other?
Yeah, we've also talked to, I mean, we've talked to several banks as we're looking for competitive interest rates. So in our initial application, we had a term sheet from Atlantic Federal Credit Union as well. But that was, that would take the place of Bank or Savings.
And now, all this financing, I believe, is contingent upon you going to the city council to get TIF approval?
Correct.
And it has nothing to do with us, but just for information purposes?
Correct.
So, just curious, I mean, if a TIF is not granted, does that put an end to the process, or?
We would look for other financing elsewhere, it would likely delay things.
And in the, I mean, in the application, you're asking for a couple waivers. But I also note, and it's a letter from Alina Watt, has to do with the water service. There was a letter dated May 14th. At the bottom of the page, it says, it is our opinion that the proposed development can likely be served by the existing water main and provide the required pressure at the proposed buildings without adversely impacting other customers being served by the existing water infrastructure. But it also goes on to say, to alleviate concerns, we propose that developer be required to perform a pressure and flow test. And goes on, I mean, I think I would ask staff, Matt particularly, I mean, I would, I would look to see for that paragraph there to be included as a condition of approval. Is that appropriate?
I believe the flow test was conducted.
So they, what's been done so far is they've done flow and pressure tests on a few hydrants in the surrounding area. And then Woodard and Curran has done some modeling to tell us what a theoretical pressure is at a pickoff point. So for the infrastructure that's in the ground now, that's as far as we can go. But I think, no matter, even if it's not a condition, just as part of the project, they're gonna need to put in this water main extension, put in a hydrant, do a flow test, and see what's available before they know if they need any, you know, artificial means, like way of pumps to increase pressure and flow. So even if we agree, it can be a condition of approval, because it's, it needs to happen either way, just to make sure.
Because I think, I mean, the second paragraph is more, you do the test, but you don't know exactly what the end result's gonna be until you, if you get approval and hook up 36 units. And that condition of approval pretty much says, okay, if the water pressure is lacking, then you guys are gonna fix it.
Yeah, we'd have to put in a pump system.
I think it would be appropriate to make it like an actual condition, and just make sure Water Department approves of the flow testing results. I guess Fire Department as well for hydrants before moving forward.
And would you take, Matt, would you take a look at the last paragraph on that page two, May 14th? I mean, that's what I would, I would propose to put pretty much all of that last paragraph above the closing as a condition of approval. Maybe from, to alleviate those concerns, we propose that the developer be required to perform a pressure and flow test with the site hydrant after the water extension is constructed.
Yep, and I would, I would just add that here it just mentions the water district or the water department review of the data. I would also just include the Fire Department in that discussion, so they get approvals from both of those departments. Other than that, I think this language works for the condition. Would you like to be involved in that, Tom?
And is that, Matt, is that wording there enough to guarantee that, you know, once, if it's approved and the current water line is hooked up to the. if it's approved and the current water line is hooked up to the 36 units, that if there's not enough pressure for either them or the rest of Beals Avenue, that they alleviate the problem?
Yeah.
Is this wording sufficient to guarantee that?
I would say, you know, you want that specifically called out, because the way it would be worded now, if the city gave approval based on the numbers and the modeling or the flow test, and it turned out that something wasn't right with the test, or something, but the city gave approval anyway, for their own development, they're probably gonna fix it anyway, but yeah, we should say if there's a, I'm trying to think what the measurable would be, so, to measure if there was like an actual drop-off in water pressure for the other residents of Beals Avenue. Is that like an additional pump, it probably won't be on their property, but would have to be installed further down Beals Ave at the main, so. I would, I would just put a wording in there that if, you know, if the, I would keep the piece, part here that's about the approval from the city to move forward, but if not, we can either put in wording that says if, you know, even after city approval, if water pressure for the development or for Beals Avenue is significantly decreased, you know, I guess would say at the levels where water usage is no longer possible, that, you know, the city and the developer will look to remedy the issue. I'm not sure what you would say exactly, because it's, you're installing a pump, or it's gonna be increasing water line, I'm not sure what the solution would be, because I haven't any fear.
If you put it as that, if it negatively affects the system in any way for the development or the road of Beals Ave, they shall be required to rectify the issue, to bring it back to current UPC, to the 20 PSI and the 500 gallons per minute for the hydrant flow for me, for the Fire Department.
You're writing that down, right?
No. If I were to make this motion, I would look at him and say, "Say what you just said," and make that part of the thing.
But I like that you're comfortable using the hydrant flow rate as the.
The 500 is the minimum for me, and the 20 is the minimum for you.
I'm counting on you to be able to say that again, to say.
I guess I'd ask you folks if you're happy with, or willing to go along with what I'm thinking should be done.
Yeah. I guess I would, we apologize for the side discussion, we were just wanting to be sure that those conditions are already met, so that, you know, we're, there's a standard that we're getting back to versus a standard that we're having to improve to, if that makes sense for the entire neighborhood, but certainly, we wouldn't want this project to adversely affect anyone in terms of their water pressure, so.
You said flow tests have been done on the current lines?
Yeah, the Water Department had provided us with flow and pressures, which I don't have those, I believe it was three different hydrants in the area, I don't have those numbers with me, but from memory, I believe they were all in excess of that 20 PSI.
Get it anywhere, okay.
So that'd be something that would likely be measured before the line was activated, before this extension was activated, measure it, you know, real time, activate it, and then check those measurements again, I would assume.
I agree, the issue would become is to when the development, when everything is put in place, after that, you're gonna have, if something happens, you're gonna have to correct it, correct? I mean, if you put in, let's say you put in two units.
And that adversely affects the 20 PSI that's required to be at each residence on Beals Avenue, you're gonna have to correct that. Correct? Am I wrong?
Well, that's what I'm shooting for.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, if you, if two of your units turn the water on and it drops the pressure on one house to 15, you've gotta make, you've gotta correct that somehow.
Yeah, I think that's what we understand.
Yeah.
And so you won't know until after you, until after stuff starts happening.
Yeah.
So it's imperative that there be something in writing on the plans as well, that after the fact, that it will be corrected by LPLs regardless.
I would, I would just ask, you know, that there is, that is a, certainly we're willing to take on a certain amount of risk, but if, I would like to know sort of the breadth of the households that we would be responsible for ensuring that they maintain the same water pressure, and, you know, how that testing would be done. I think it probably is more appropriate to do water testing at the hydrant level, but I'm not an expert in this, to go into people's houses to do testing, I think.
No, it would be at the water, before, the water main before it goes into people's houses.
And I would love, you know, if the written component would refer to the specific areas that would be tested, you know, I think that's something that we could be, we're able to.
Well, Tom, you said there's three hydrants on Beals Avenue?
In and around Beals there is, yes.
What?
In and around Beals there is, yes. And around.
I think one way to possibly look at this, you're gonna put hydrants into this development? Okay, are they going in first?
I don't think we've gone that detailed in the phasing yet, but I think it would need to be something fairly early in the process.
I would say that if you get one of your furthest hydrants in, or whatever, get your water line in, and then test the system with flowing the hydrant in your development as well as out on Beals, that will tell you what's gonna happen. So it would be probably imperative upon you to get your water lines in first, your hydrants, before you do anything else. That way you will know whether you're gonna have to have a booster pump somewhere.
Yeah, no, I think that's fair.
You see where I'm going from?
Yeah.
And I think the developer has to be protected in case there's something else that goes in on Beals Avenue that's unexpected, that might degrade the pressure, it's kind of like, well, you're not responsible for that, so, I think it's, needs to be in there as well somehow. Now, how all that works out in a language is beyond me.
I'm just thinking you have it expire after like a certain number of months.
What's that?
I think you just have the condition expire, so when project complete, is completed, construction is completed, you wait, you know, 12 months, and.
Yeah, that would be, that would presumably operationally take care of it, yes. There's a chance of something else going in along Beals that would degrade it, and that dandruff is slim and none, I would think.
Do you know whether that line on Beals Ave looped with High Street? Do you know the direction of travel of water up to Beals Avenue? Because that could make a big difference. If it is looped, you may, you may not have any issue. That's a, that's a, that's a difficult question probably for you to answer.
It is, yeah, because our survey doesn't actually show, it indicates that it comes through that connection towards High Street.
Yeah.
But I couldn't say for sure if that's a, if that connection exists or not.
Reggie might know.
Yeah, I'm sure he does.
But if it's a looped line between, comes up Main Street, down Beals Avenue, connects back to High Street, you probably won't have any issue, because then you're gonna have all the volume you need with the pressure up there. But if it's not, you could have an issue.
Yeah.
It is, it is looped, I thought.
I was about to say, I think Reggie did mention.
Do you know what's looped? Do you have a diagram that he can have?
No, but I got confirmation that it is.
You got, confirm where?
From Reggie.
Just right now? Okay.
That was fast.
Public servants at your service.
You don't answer my calls, Rick.
You gotta text, text is the key.
At the last meeting, I asked about, at the entrance from Beals Avenue down towards High Street, about putting in a sidewalk. Now, I think that's still appropriate, even though the sidewalk on your entrance would not go all the way down to the sidewalk on High Street, as the railroad tracks, whatever, but it, it does get close to the trail there. So I think it would be appropriate, the sidewalks within your development, I think it would be appropriate to have a sidewalk, you know, for people coming out of here, you know, walking, to at least get them as close as possible to the sidewalks on High Street. I mean, that driveway, drive opening there covers, is gonna cover half, two-thirds of the frontage that you own, so you're really not talking about much of a sidewalk as far as length goes.
So you're talking about putting a sidewalk in the municipal right of way, not on the client's property?
I guess that's.
Yeah, I wouldn't require that right now. If the trail does go in, the city may look, see approach, and, you know, there may be sidewalks going down all of Beals Avenue at some point, and so we may look to just add that if the trail project is successfully constructed, because we don't know if it actually will be or not right now. So I wouldn't require that for this development. We may approach them in the future about it, but.
But I'm afraid if the rail, the trail goes away, that this little sidewalk will never happen.
Yeah.
I'm not really sure what the purpose of that little sidewalk would be if the trail's not there, I mean, you're gonna send a little sidewalk to the railroads and it's gonna stop anyway.
Either long do you'd like to have sidewalks on most of the urban streets, and this would just be.
Right, but for that, that's little size, if the city is going to build the extra sidewalks all down Beals Ave, we may just approach the property owner at that point and include it into the sidewalks we're gonna already be constructing.
But that's not guaranteed to happen.
Yeah, but if it doesn't happen, then what's the point of adding that stub of sidewalk anyway, that's my question is.
So people can walk and get close to High Street, instead of walking totally in Beals Avenue. To get from their development to High Street.
Yeah.
They would be totally walking in on Beals Avenue, instead of on a sidewalk.
Right, but most of that's DOT crosswalk, or railroad crossing anyway.
Well, not as far as their boundary line.
I think you're only asking them to do a sidewalk within their property.
Yes, yeah, they can't do it outside their property.
Well, they could if the city would let them.
But they'd be dealing with the railroad and a DOT.
Do you have a sidewalk that goes all the way out to Beals from your development?
We do, and then the mouth of the driveway is essentially the width of the property. We can paint a crosswalk, but it's already paved, there's, there's nothing on the applicant's property that's not paved essentially.
Probably pavement from pin to pin?
Pretty close.
The extra space is currently on the far side of the side or way, closer to the abiding property, where the property line is on the plan, where the apron for the road is, it goes right up to the property line.
So what you're saying is that the apron of the driveway entrance basically is a sidewalk, or could be, it could be, can be used as a sidewalk?
Yeah, we could stripe it as a crosswalk, because the other, the sidewalk as you drive out, the sidewalk on the right.
So effectively, you're saying that there's really nothing there to pave as sidewalk because of the configuration of the road, driveway?
Yeah, if we're speaking strictly on the applicant's property, yeah.
So I think that should give you what you'd like, because I, I, I can turn, I mean, I think that we should, you know, have the developers put in sidewalks wherever we possibly can, especially in downtown, which is my own personal thing. But, but what you're saying is that we're, you're already doing it basically.
Yeah.
So, I'm good with that personally, but I'm not you. Thank God.
I mean, when you look at the plan, you see it, right, that the apron goes right up to the boundary line?
Yeah.
No, I see it.
There were a couple waivers that were requested.
One last thing before, before the other waivers, you know, I'm seeing all these developments that have long roads going into them, and then they end, right, and, you know, random people going back and so forth, and so I'm, you know, I'm worried in general about, you know, kind of traffic getting back in there and then traffic through a development and so forth, and trying to get back around. So the solution here might be, as you go in, there are, is a kind of a parking lot, or not parking lot, there's a row of parking to the left as you go in, all the way in. If a couple of those were reserved, well, kind of marked out as not parking spaces, I think you have enough spare spaces that you don't necessarily need those.
So you're talking about striping one for like a turnaround spot, essentially? Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea. We could, I'd have to check the total parking numbers if we're right on the threshold or not, but I don't think it'd be prohibitive to add in the width of one parking space.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to, we just don't, a tiny little hammerhead spaces.
So, yeah.
If you do that, that'd be way smaller, I think.
Yeah, Matt said we're right on with total number of parking spaces, so.
And then you have signs, I think, that say, yeah, private road, road knows through traffic, you already have that covered pretty much. And you might, by the way, you might put that sign on both sides.
I guess I would push back a little bit, I think, you know, having the roundabout already on the site, or essentially a roundabout where folks can drive through and get it back out and never have to back in and turn around and okay.
Yeah, but they're, but they're driving through all those units and past all those units, I mean, that would be the issue that you'd wanna avoid.
Yeah.
So, I'm pushing back on your pushback.
Yeah.
Your turn.
I guess it's ultimately an added cost that I'm not sure how much it will practically get used, but.
It's just an option, and I think it's fundamentally free, I hope.
You know, I do think if you put the note through traffic, you know, private road signs both, both sides at the entrance, you know, I'm trying to think, because like there is this, there are parking spaces here that someone could pull into and turn around right at the beginning of the actual development, you know, if they're full, you can't do it, but maybe if they're specifically like visitor spots or something.
Just a little striping.
Well, they're right at, then you'd have to grant a parking waiver, because they're right at the number of parking spaces.
There is a wetland right there as well, so.
Yeah, I see that you can't kind of go down there. So if you can't do it, you can't do it, I mean.
I mean, there is, there is kind of that mouth of the road, or not, I guess not the road, but the loop of the parking that could be used for that.
But, you know, and again, you know, my thing here is that you're gonna have people that just kind of randomly go down there, because they're gonna, especially early on, right, because they're gonna say, oh, I mean, especially if it's early on and Beals gets shut off for whatever reason, you know, people are gonna go down there, and then there're gonna be cars, you know, kind of going through a loop, you know, whether there are kids playing in the street and all that kind of stuff, and it's just, it's just kind of good proactive little thing you can do, if you can. And again, I don't know that we can require you to do that, so this is just a good faith thing.
I think it's just a rec request.
What's that?
I think it's just a rec request.
It is, it is a rec request. I take full responsibility for that.
You could name it that, too.
What's that?
You could name it Rick's turnaround.
Yeah, yeah, if you could put a sign up, that'd be really cool. A lasting tribute.
With the note through traffic signs, have an understanding of this is a part of the neighborhood, what it is.
Did you guys resolve that?
Weren't you listening?
No.
I think the same idea that happened up there happened down here, where maybe putting a sign of the development, a neighborhood name up, so people know, know through traffic, private residents, here's the name of the residence. And then hopefully they have a better idea of, oh, there's nothing down that road for me if I don't live there.
Okay, but they have to be able to turn around that spot.
Well, again, currently Beals Avenue and High Street's open, so they could just keep driving.
Throw on High Street, they'll teach them.
Has anybody had a discussion with the school department to see if they would actually go into the development and pick kids up?
Yes, I met with the school superintendent before our last meeting, and she did confirm that they would plan to use the whole, come through and pick up at every front door.
And how was mail delivery gonna be handled?
Yeah, I discussed that with the post office, and they were fine with mail delivery at each unit.
Perhaps you could, before we get on to site distance, perhaps discuss a little bit about the requested waiver from two Elsworth lighting standards?
Yeah, so the site plan and the lighting plan as. Yeah, so the site plan and the lighting plan as submitted, they meet Ellsworth standard, um, but just because of the geometry of the lot, you have that narrow access. Um, we're required to light the sidewalk to a certain level, um, but you can't spill any light past the property line. Uh, we also wanna be good neighbors and don't wanna have lights that are a nuisance. So the only way that we could meet the city standard for lighting was to put in a lot of ballard lights. I think it's like sixteen or twenty ballard lights along that sidewalk at the entrance that are short. And then right behind it, put like a four foot tall wood fence, and that keeps the light from spilling off the property line. So it was a challenge, there was, you know, a lot of maintenance issues with ballard lighting, um, so it's not ideal from the developer's standpoint. They would prefer to just have much more standard streetlights, um, that then would also cast some light on the street, which isn't required, but, um, so that was the, that was the point of the waiver, kind of reducing the standard of the zone that this is in to a slightly lesser foot handle, slightly lesser average foot handle over the sidewalk. And that would allow them to use, I think, is three or four more standard light poles that are used throughout the rest of the site, rather than sixteen plus ballards and having to put up a fence.
So the ballards have lights in them as three sixty lighting, or is it one eighty like just on one side?
I, I can't rem, but I have to look at the cut sheet that we had for those. I can't remember exactly how they were oriented, but even if they are kind of a one eighty, it's not a, it's not a hard line at the back of that where it doesn't cast any light backwards. So that's what required that fence.
Okay.
Mike, can I ask, why, why is there such a spread between, um, towards, towards the end of the sidewalk, such a spread between the lights? Whereas you got them all bunched pretty closely, that sounds great, but then you've got a gap and another gap.
Where, where in the plan are you looking?
I'm looking at the section, let's say it's around the, um, uh, snow storage area.
Okay, so that's where, um, those are full height lights, the ones that are spread apart further.
Uh huh.
Um, so those are on, you know, a, a light pole, exactly. Um, the ones that are grouped so closely, those are the ballard lights.
Right, okay.
And when the waiver or the alternate lighting plan was turned in, I'd requested the developer try and get in touch with the neighbor. Um, they did try, but did not speak to him, but I did speak to John today. He came into the office and we spoke. Um, he does have a preference. I mean, if he's here, he can speak to it more. Um, he has a preference for the original lighting plan, the three foot.
Ballard.
High ball, ballard as a fence. Um, so that would be my recommendation, just for the neighbor's sake. Have that lighting plan stay, meets the code, there's no waiver required. Um, but I would be willing, or the board could consider. There are a lot of ballards along here. Um, they would meet the code, but I don't know that this sidewalk would get the same amount of traffic that would necessarily dictate needing all of these lights, so maybe they could do every other ballard that they have posted here.
So every other ballard but continuous fence?
Yes. That way the sidewalk is still lit fairly decently and the neighbor still has that protection of the screening fence from the lighting.
I mean, if you think that that would light the sidewalk sufficiently, then I think that's something you can work out with, with them.
Yeah. More amiable with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, you know, we, we wanted to reach out and speak with the neighbor just to get, you know, try to be good neighbors and do something that's not gonna be a nuisance for them, so if that's the preference and there is a, a reduction in that standard available. Um, cause there is a lot, there are some high street lights along, along High Street. There, you know, on the poles, there's street lights right at the, the ninety degree turn on Beals Ave., there's a tall street light there as well. So there, we added those into our lighting model and it, on paper, it doesn't give you any positive effect, but the reality is when you're out there, the surrounding areas are lit. Um, so I think we're comfortable with a, a reduced standard there if the board is.
Speaking of the neighbor, uh, she had sent an email, um, inquiring about snow removal. Cause as you know, your driveway would be right next to her driveway, that actually, I think John's, he was, Mr. Partridge's driveway. So I, I guess I would ask you, what, what would be the plan? Cause obviously as you're going in, or as you're coming out, I mean, your wing's gonna be, normally would be pushing the snow to the right, which would be into her driveway. So how would you propose not taking your snow and filling her driveway?
I think the other side of the road has no curb on it, so that might be a more natural side to try and push the snow away from the sidewalk.
Sidewalk on both sides or sidewalk just on one side?
Yeah, there, there's just sidewalk on one side of the.
On the baller side.
Exactly, yeah.
So you just, so, so you can't be pushing the snow up against the ballers anyway, really. I mean,
Right.
You can physically do that, but it would be sort of bad.
Yeah.
So the idea is that you could push all the snow to the other side and you're home free, right?
I, you know, I mean, if, if you have, even the sidewalk there, I mean, heavy snowstorms and that snow may, could very easily go over onto their property. We just wanna prevent that.
I'm, I'm not sure I can address, um, you know, the, the specifics of it, but I, I imagine there's a, probably a way when you're pulling right in to take sort of a first pass and, and push to, uh, entrance right. And that would clear away, so when you're coming back out, it would sort of just fill in where the snow had been removed and not lead to overreach. But ultimately, um, you know, these are, um, condos and they'll be sold and it'll be up to the homeowner, homeowners association to hire and, and maintain the property. Um, so, you know, certainly something that we, uh, could look to address in formation of the homeowners association or something like that, but.
I mean, it'd have to be cognizance of the snow, removing the snow off the sidewalk, because, I mean, the edge of your sidewalk is the edge of their driveway.
Yeah.
And so, and normally you would plow the snow, you know, to the right side of your sidewalk, but in this case.
Well, there's also gonna be a fence there.
Yeah. So it's, I guess important not to trespass, snow trespass on that.
Yeah, so I think they add snow storage to the far side of the, the road opposite the ballers and sidewalks, that's can be an additional snow storage location. And then in the, um, draft HOA documents, they could just say follow the snow, the snow storage plan, is indicated on the site plan.
Matt, am I correct that there is a little snow storage on the right side, just as the road is taking a turn?
Yeah, up there, but I think they're talking about closer to the front entrance of the road.
Any other questions before we get to site distance? So it's gonna be private roads, right? Are you planning on making this the city standards at all? So for the city to accept it in the future?
Um, the first access road meets city, city standards, but I believe there's no intention to turn this over to the city.
Okay. Okay, let's talk site distance.
Just wanted to walk through the live demonstration we had earlier, uh, and then I can, I guess allow Diane to come up and speak for your request for the waiver.
Just make sure you talk loud enough so the folks behind you can hear you.
Um, actually, Diane, why don't you come up to the mic and then do the, talk about the request for the waiver and we'll go through what happened at the site.
Yes, I think at the site, we confirmed the site distance that we had reported, which is.
Could you start with the waiver request, the, for the site distance, yeah?
Yeah, it's greater than two hundred and five feet, but it's less than two fifty, which is your town standard. So we were requesting a waiver down to the state DOT standard of two hundred and five feet for that distance to the right. And I think you saw in the field that it is over two hundred and five feet, but less than two fifty.
So do you have, I mean, not exact figures, but I mean, what did you come up with figures for the site distance?
Uh, so when I measured from the drop, the pin, you know, measured out driveway, um, it was two hundred and eleven feet of site distance, um, before. Uh, I think Diane, you couldn't see me anymore and then, but John, you said you could still see me even when I went to the two forty or something like that about that. Um, but, so I put it down as visible until around two hundred and twenty a feet. And then there was the idea of shifting the driveway over potentially. Um, it didn't significantly increase site distance. It only increased it by about four feet. Um, so there wasn't, it didn't really change the, the site distance from the road.
Okay, uh, just to discuss site distance, the city standard and the state standard. The city standard is, is just a flat ten feet per mile per hour. Uh, involves no engineering. It just, it covers every street in Ellsworth. Uh, it's not very fact-driven. Uh, it's an easy computation to make. Uh, but perhaps Diane, you can explain the DOT, the difference between the DOT standard and what we have for a city standard.
The DOT standard is generally just a little bit less than that ten mile per hour, and it's based upon asto calculations, and it's what DOT has come up with as what they consider minimum standards. So like for forty mile an hour road, I don't know that number off the top of my head, forty-five mile an hour road, the ten mile per hour would give you four fifty, but their requirement is four twenty-five. Um, for a twenty-five mile an hour road, your requirement is two fifty and their requirement is, is two-ten. So.
The big, I mean, the big difference between the city standard and the state standard is that the state standard has been calculated by engineers. The city standard.
It's just a number that's kind of thrown out. Right. It's an approximation of, an idea of a number that would be good to have.
Yeah, and it makes it easy for our review, but it's very generic.
Correct. And a lot of municipalities have that ten mile per hour rule.
And so the, I mean, the, the, the distances we came up with today measured, do, do those meet the state standard?
Yes, the state standard is two-ten.
And that the standard, the state standard would also cover the, uh, looking out towards High Street?
Yeah, the state usually, what we usually use for the state is they have corner clearance standards where your drive can be located relative to a corner for a corner lot, and that standard for a mo, high, high volume mobility arterial corner, they like to have a hundred feet. This project has about eighty, eighty-five feet, um, which it's just a local road, it's not a high volume arterial, so. And again, it's also based upon speed limit, so as traffic's coming up from High Street, they're going at a really slow speed. They're not doing ten, I don't think. They're certainly not doing twenty-five. And that's another consideration when you think about site distance towards the right, when they're coming around that corner. I don't think anybody's doing twenty-five at that point. They've gotta take a sharp bend and they know they're coming to that stop. So you also have to consider actual speeds versus, you know, the posted speed limit, cause I don't think at that location, anybody's actually doing twenty-five.
Now, I know, uh, there's been discussion of Beals Ave. being shut off, uh, which we really can't take into account. I mean, it's, it's not shut off right now. It may or may not happen. That's something that the city council has to decide. Obviously that would have an impact on, on the safety, but that's nothing for us to decide, just so the, I mean, the folks in, from Beals Ave. know that although that's been discussed and these folks have opinion on whether it should be closed or not, we can't take that into account.
I will just add from the site visit that, you know, the site distance coming up, if you're coming up the hill off of High Street is the eighty-five feet, or eighty, eighty-five feet, but the, my measure to the top of the hill, right where the curb stops or starts heading down High Street, it was about seventy-five feet. So if you want the full vehicle in view, it's seventy-five feet site distance, but you can still see the vehicle as it crosses the hill at the eighty feet, right?
But I think it was obvious from everybody who was up there that as soon as a car starts to turn off High Street on the Beals Ave., you can see it.
And then just one, some suggestions from the police department while we were there. Um, they were comfortable with the site distance, but they would ask, you know, city staff to communicate with the DOT to see if it's potential for them to clear the small tree landscaping that was at the end of their property that lines up with the driveway.
Yeah.
And then to potentially move the railroad signage to the other side of the right of way. Just so that that full left, if you're taking a left, you can look, it's fully cleared out of obstruction.
Now, and I, I mean, they're also, and maybe we've already discussed that, but, uh, I mean, they had, consider no left turn sign out of development to pair with stop sign.
The problem with that, the problem with that is, is that, you know, you have cars that are, are making these turns and so forth, that's totally permitted, and that left turn out of development, you know, if it was on High Street, a left turn out of the development makes a lot, makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
But here it's like, you know, it's just not an issue, because you really have the visibility. You know, you can certainly see, as John just said, you know, as cars turn from High Street, either, you know, either a left turn on the Beal or a right turn on the Beal, you can see the top of the vehicle, no problem whatsoever. Uh, notwithstanding the fact that when a car comes up, there's like this weird, you know, kind of situation. But the, when a car stopped at the inters, at the driveway intersection, can easily see that car coming. And especially at night even.
Yeah, headlights.
So, yeah, and, and, and what you said about the, the prevailing speed, I think is important, because, you know, stopping site distance at fifteen miles an hour is like eighty-five feet, you know, and so that's kind of factors into, uh, you know, how, how much site distance you need and so forth. And it's, it's just not a problem.
Any other questions on the site distance? Thank you, Diane. Any other questions from the board? And any other comments from staff?
Yeah.
And I will open the public hearing. For any folks who'd like to address the board, please come up to the, the podium, identify yourself and speak your mind.
My name's John G. I live at fifty-two Beals. Um, I wanted to thank the, uh, planning board and the city for that wonderful walk this afternoon, kind of quelled my fears, uh, for all that they went over. Cause you know, the paper we, we got and explained what you were doing down there, said we can't ask questions, we can't really talk about it down there. We can do it up here at the meeting, but nobody talked about anything down there. All we did was stand around. I, I think most of us had the impression that what came out there, that we were gonna walk back, see where they were gonna put the buildings, how the roads were gonna go in, because that all affects us, the people that live on that street, you know. But again, I thank you for what we got. So the police already have a problem with taking care of traffic on that street, and if they don't close it, all it does is intensify it. I've only lived there four years and I've seen a police officer pull a car over there once. I stopped to make sure hell didn't freeze over, because that was the only time I ever seen a police car on that street pull anybody over, you know? And fifteen or twenty-five mile an hour in that street is not realistic, especially between three and five o'clock. And we're not even to the full tourist season where the traffic backs up so far down the main road that anybody that wants to go north that doesn't wanna fight the traffic or go, uh, right up High Street, or they're going to the hospital, come up Beal. And then they'll come down and make a left and then. And then they'll come down and make a left, and then make a left back out on, onto One. So when the season gets here, that traffic backs up even more. The traffic will back up from the light or the stop sign down at the other end that you go across to the hospital halfway up our block. It takes us fifteen, twenty minutes sometimes to get out in that street. So either you close the street or you don't, you know? If you close the street, it saves us a, a lot of issues, except that there's still thirty-six units. So break that down, two cars, that's six, let's say, let's even take it down to less, fifty cars in that unit that we have to deal with daily people going in and out of there, you know? And that, and that, if they close it, we still get that traffic the one way. But it doesn't seem like it'd be bad as the other way. We still don't know whether we're, from what I'm understanding, we still don't know if they're going to close the road. Is that right?
That's correct. That's something that the city council has to decide.
So don't, don't, so it doesn't seem like they should make a decision what they're going to do with the road before they start putting a shovel in the ground? Would seem to me, you know? I mean, I've worked construction forty years. I'm a retired mason. I've been around commercial construction all my life. And a lot of the stuff I hear here, it seems like if, a lot of if and buts, you know? A lot of the stuff isn't locked down, you know? It's like doing a water test. Okay, it's the fire department doing the water test. Well, this, that's for the city, I guess, but they don't work for this private company that's putting this in. Shouldn't they do their own, their own water test? Or I don't know, maybe there's law against that. I don't know, you know? Because the people that live on Beal, we've already had problems with our water pressure. So you're going to stick another thirty-six units on it. How's that going to work? And then if you've got a separate line for fire, because I know they talked about that in the first meeting. I don't, I wasn't here the second meeting. I was out of town. So I don't know where that all went. You know, whether they would, or if they think there's enough water in that, pressure on that line to keep water up for the thirty-six units plus fire, you know? Because I know I got, I got over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in my house, you know? And there's a lot of seniors there, a lot of those houses, you know, to me, that's a lot of money. Maybe you people ain't a lot of money. But the reality is, we lose, we lose water pressure. We don't have water pressure because of this complex. I'm not going to be happy, you know? And it seems like it should be able to be addressed before, not after. Because once you start something, if anything I learned, you don't, it don't stop, especially once the city gives it okay. Because the city makes the taxes off it. It's their tax base. They want it, you know? When we're the ones that pay for it, because we're on, we're on that street. The, as far as the sewer and wa, the water lines, if, if they, so I'm assuming they're just going to hook up to the existing. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and does this, the, because we just had the sewer system, and the city had the sewer system inspected, I think it was last year. They didn't badger lighting, or somebody ran down the street and did it. And the funny thing right after that, we all got notices if we want to take out insurance because of the, the plumbing. That tells me, you know, well, maybe it ain't in the best shape, you know? I mean, you don't need to be a mind reader on that. And that's old, and that's old, old pipe. Nobody knows what's going to happen with it, you know? That's a long, and that's a long, that's a lot, a lot farther to push all that, all that sewer sewage and all, and all the water, you know? So, and I'm just saying that, you know, it, it's easier to do something about it now than later. The other thing is, is has there been a, uh, professional or a commercial company do a, uh, uh, traffic impact study for that corner? Because the way I understood it, we saw two kids out there with boards counting cars two years ago, or it was a year ago. Because that doesn't, that doesn't, to me, that's not a professionally done job. They usually put a box up with counters on it, so you know how many cars in or out. That would, that would, that would, or if there is one done, do we have access to it so we can see? Because we have to live with this, you know? The construction traffic, a lot of heavy equipment going to be coming in and out of that. Is that coming up that hill, the short, the short shot in, or is that coming up Beals Avenue? Because Beals Avenue, we just got, we, there's another case of hell freezing over. They fixed the road in four spots with asphalt right before we have people coming to look at the street. Because that's been like that for two years, okay? And so if we have all this construction on the street, it's just going to make it worse. So is the taxpayers going to pay for that? Are we going to pay for a new road? Or is this company going to pay for the new road? Or are they going to split it? Because I don't think it's fair to us, but we've already paid a lot of taxes where we live, you know? And they're talking about raising them again. And same thing with, they're talking about they want a new water treatment plant, I've heard. Well, you know, I've had two, two letters in the mail that there's, there's been issues with our water. But it's from February, and now I get it, and I guess it was the end, the end of May. A little slow on that, you know? So is there a problem or isn't there a problem? Or can they, say they address that, or they can't? You know, it seems like there's an awful lot of things that could be done way before this gets any farther than it is. Because again, once this gets approved, there's not much we can do except for stand out on the street and say, this is unfair to senior citizens, you know? Bring the Great Panthers in if we have to, which I'm one of, you know? I hate to admit that.
A lot of them up here.
I guess, I guess that's it. I'm just, I'm just really frustrated because we're not getting a lot of, a lot of answers of what's going on. And it just doesn't seem like everything, there's cut and dried answers. Most of the time when you see a big development put in, it's either yes, no, yes, no. You know, it's not like, well, I don't have in front of me to look at. I don't know the exact measurement. I don't know the footage. I don't know what the state requires. I don't know what the city requires. It's like the weight limit on that street. Heavy equipment, you can't run it on that street with a, unless it's a, you know, like a city snowplow or something because of the weight. So is the city going to change those weight, the, the, the weight laws? Or is that something the state, the state regulates? I don't know. But it might want to be looked at, you know? Because I know once, once it starts, and if we do have problems, I'll do everything I can to fight it, you know? I don't know if you could do a Clax action lawsuit against After Fact or whatever. But I'm not going, I'm not going to lose my retirement home or my comfortability there because of something that comes down the road after and it's not, and it hasn't been answered, you know? I know everybody's trying to do their best. I'm just pointing stuff out, but I'm really, really frustrated, you know? It'd be nice to get some full answers. That's all I got. I appreciate your time.
Sir?
A couple of your questions.
Did you refer to yourself as Mr. G?
Yes.
Okay. Nice to meet you. I'm Mark Rich.
Yes, sir.
I'm intrigued. I heard multiple opinions this evening about water pressure and it being in a loop as opposed to a dead-in-line. And I thought there was a consensus that there wouldn't be a drop in water pressure. But my concern is, what historically has happened with water pressure for you and your neighbors? I, I, I want to know more. I want, for my edification. Are you having low flow at your home?
Yeah, sometimes the water pressure's low. The shower's not the way it should be. If you're out in the garden, you know, and all of a sudden you see the water, the water pressure drop, and it's at oddball times, but it happens. So I guess, okay, and you can, and we can write that off as a fluke maybe. But now if you've got another thirty-six units, you know, some of them are, I don't know if some of them are two, or have two bathrooms or one, whatever. But that's a hell of a lot more water flow, you know? I don't know what, I don't know what the logistics are, you know, liquid per foot on it. Maybe, you know, maybe the fire department would know, but I don't know, you know? So there is, but there is issues, you know? You could, you could, you could go around, do a survey on everybody on the street, and at least half of them are going to tell you, yeah, there's an issue there. And I know some of the, there's an older folks down past us, well, they're in Canada for the summer, that she had the sewer back up over the winter, you know? Now, how that relates, I'm not sure. But I'm just saying that did happen, so.
My concern, of course, not only for the quality of life in your home.
Sure.
For the fire department, should there be a fire on your street? Would we have adequate flow?
We've addressed that issue, because.
I thought we did.
There's going to be a provision in there that if their development results in pressure lower than what the fire inspector says is required to be in those lines of hydrants, then they would have to address that issue. And so that's going to be, would be a condition of approval that their development does not result.
So are they going to do like an eight, you know, like a two-hour test, a three-hour test? I mean, how's that, how does that work? Because, you know, a half hour of water pressure is really not a lot.
I don't know how, what a test.
I don't, I don't either. I'm, that's just, I'm just asking a question. I don't know. But I appreciate your concern. Thank you.
And the issue about the traffic study that was performed by a licensed engineer. Diane Moravito is a licensed traffic engineer. The police department did a speed study in.
Nineteen.
Twenty nineteen? Okay. They would have copies of what the results of that were, how, how many cars, what, what the speed was. It's quite a detailed report.
What year was that?
Two thousand nineteen.
Okay. So that's just before, that, so that's just, that's during COVID. So tra, to me, that means traffic would be a lot later.
Well, the, the test performed by the developers from twenty twenty-three. There's a side happening that the police test was from twenty nineteen.
All I'm saying is, there's, there should be somebody that does an impact study that, it's an official impact study. Is this an official impact study?
Yes.
And it's from twenty nineteen?
No, it was twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three?
Twenty twenty-three data is dated, the report is twenty twenty-four.
So was there counters put out there, or was it two people out there counting cars?
It was two people counting cars.
Yeah, see, that's, how, how is that?
That's a professional expert standard, the way to do it.
Let me clarify that. A manual turning movement count is a preferred method because it tells you the number of vehicles that are turning left and right, and which way they're coming and going. If you put a tube count down, you only get the total number of vehicles coming and going. You don't know which directions are coming and going.
They're still going across the street. They're still coming up and down the street, though. We still have them on the street. And, and they, they had people count both ends.
And you have to do it on a special, special hour because certain time quick, why?
No. If you want to talk, you can come up to the counter, but we're not going to get into an argument.
Okay, I, I just, all I'm saying is that it just seems kind of not done professional. I don't know. My opinion. Maybe, you know, maybe I'm wrong. I'm, I'm from somewhere else. So I don't have a huge dog in the fight. I've only been on the block for four year, four years, okay? It's not like I was born and raised Detroit. I was born and raised in Detroit, so.
The applicant has done what's required under our ordinance, including the traffic study.
Okay, no. This one is, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Virginia Holden. I live at twenty-five Beals Avenue. I moved to Beals Avenue because the kind of neighborhood it was, and still is. It's a beautiful, quiet, respected neighborhood. We have no sidewalks. If there's more people coming in, the roads are going to have to be widened, and we're going to need more sidewalks. Our road has not been paved in I don't know how long. I mean, we don't need speed bumps. We've got potholes all over the place. The water pressure, like he said, in our house, we never know what it's going to be. The traffic, the traffic comes at certain times. If you do your study between four and six P M., you get all the people that are coming home, that come take that right. And I take that right to come up on Beals Ave. Because I don't want to sit in the traffic light with all that traffic. Now, if you shut Beals Ave off there, the traffic at the traffic light is even going to be backed up further than it was. Meanwhile, you've got an intersection of Union Street, Main Street, and Beals Ave. Three-way intersection. If you have more cars coming that way, you're going to have to do something because not everybody stops. Not everybody looks three, both ways and up that way. It's, it's a dangerous intersection, that three-way intersection. The, these, these homes they're going to put in, are they going to be bought by someone and put out for Airbnbs?
No.
Are we going to?
No, it's in the homeowners association, yes.
Are we going to have, are we going to have people who don't know how to drive? When I come up that, when I take that right and come up the tracks, and I'm going very slow. The hood of my car is up like this, and I cannot see anything until it comes down like that. If somebody isn't paying attention coming out of there. We need more information. We need, they don't need to come out on our street. We need, our street gets a sign that says no heavy loads. In the wintertime, they put that pink sign up, no heavy loads. If they want to do something, let them sell the land and get rid of it so that we don't have to deal with it, and they don't have to deal with it either.
I'm Rhonda Carter. I live at fifty-six Beals Avenue. I have a paper here that I was going to read. These two pretty much have, have covered a lot of it. But one thing before I read this, when everybody was down there to the walk-through today, that traffic study, I remember from the last meeting, said that there was nobody turning left from High Street onto Beals Avenue, and there was nobody taking a left onto High Street from Beals Avenue. While we were standing there, I counted ten that took a left from High Street onto Beals Avenue, and three that took a left from Beals Avenue onto High Street. She said one, one, in a day, the whole day. You were there. You were there. You could see it. Also, because all of the people were milled around on that corner, people were going very slow up over the railroad tracks. That don't usually happen. It's usually boom. I mean, they're, they're, they're moving. And sometimes when they go by my place, they're going at least forty, fifty miles an hour. On our way here today, John was going the speed limit on Beals Avenue, and a car passed him. It's dangerous. It really is dangerous. But I address. I'm going to read this. I was trying to figure out whether I was going to or not, but I, I really would like to read it. It is my opinion that the residents of Beals Avenue have the right to be heard, not just listened to, heard. We've earned a privilege to speak and really be heard. We paid big prices for our homes for the privilege of living in this desirable neighborhood. We pay our high taxes. We pay our water and sewer bills, even though none of our taxes seem to go to what is desperately needed on Beals Avenue. There are water pressure issues, failing sewer system, and the street's pavement is atrocious. We have brought before the board very valid arguments as to why the residents object to this very large housing complex in a small, quiet, enjoyable neighborhood. This project will destroy the dynamics of that neighborhood. I wish to express my strong opposition to the proposed housing development in our neighborhood. While I understand the need for affordable housing in our city, I believe that this project would have a detrimental impact on our small community, and I believe the project is simply not the right fit for our neighborhood. My primary concerns are as follows. First and foremost, the proposed, proposed development is simply too large for our street. Beals Avenue has at most thirty family homes, single-family homes. This project will more than double the existing footprint. The increase in population density would put a strain on our already overburdened infrastructure leading to increased traffic congestion, noise pollution, strain on our public services, which are already feeling with lower water pressures, sewer system failures, and disintegrating asphalt. Adding to these already compromised services will undoubtedly cause a major problem on our street. Furthermore, the type of housing being proposed is simply not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and will significantly alter the neighborhood's character forever. Increased traffic, I've already spoke about that. Noise and privacy, the proposing house, house, the proposed housing development will significantly alter the serene and peaceful environment that currently exists in our neighborhood. Increased construction noise during the development process and potential noise from additional residents will disrupt our daily lives and our privacy. I'm deeply concerned that the development will negatively impact property values in this neighborhood. Homeowners have heavily invested in this area with the understanding that it is a single-family residential street. Introducing a large-scale development in our, in close proximity to our properties will. Introducing a large-scale development in close proximity to our properties will have an adverse effect on our investments. I believe there are more suitable locations in which, in the area which housing development could be built without compromising the existing quality of life for existing residents in our neighborhood. I urge the city to explore alternative options that better align with the community's needs and concerns, such as making the property accessible from another location other than Beals Avenue. In light of the above concerns, I strongly urge the city reconsider the approval of this housing development in its current proposed location. Thank you for your time to hear my concerns. I hope the city will carefully consider the potential implications of this development on our community's well-being and choose a course of action that serves the best interest of the residents of Beals Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just ask Diane, could you address the issue of?
Left turns.
Yeah. Also, I mean, left turns off High Street, I mean, I've got.
Yeah, in the traffic study from the council we did last summer, they were done under peak summer conditions in July, so it's a little bit harder to turn left in July than it probably now in June. But we had two left turns out in the P.M. peak hour, zero left turns out in the A.M. peak hour. We had seven left turns in, in the P.M. peak hour, and three left turns in, in the A.M. peak hour.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is John Partridge and I live eighty Beals Avenue, right on the end of the street where this proposed road is to be going in. I agree with all the things I've heard here and I've talked with the neighborhood from my house, which is the last one on the end to the, to the end on Main Street. And that is the sentiment of everybody on the street without exception. Having said that, I don't feel I can add a lot. I can agree with what's been said, but to say it all over again, I don't think it's the right thing to do. But I, you did receive the letter, I'm not sure when he sent this out, but you received the, I put my glasses on, I guess, that Kyle Brooks had sent. Did you all get that letter? Did you all read that letter? Because that, that letter is right on and there's no sense in me repeating all of that over again. You have that information. This, this just isn't the place for this kind of a development. For all of the reasons given, that steep draw coming off of High Street is, I'm sure you've all done it once or twice, to get out of that High Street traffic, which is backed up from the light at Main Street back sometimes to Beals Avenue or beyond even. And adding all of this additional traffic, which according to Kyle's figuring, would increase from a hundred cars a day to four hundred cars a day. That's, that's putting a really bad strain on this avenue that folks have been talking about and how peaceful and how the reason that many people built there is because it is close to town, close to the amenities and getting out onto High Street the other way, Main Street the other way. And this does, this kind of a project will take away all of that. I think there are other places that the project needs to look at about getting into and out of there. For example, out by Merrill's Furniture, there's already a road started into where they are, out there between there and the bank. Perhaps up on the Fairgrounds Road, up on the back side. I think there are other options that they need to take a hard look at and come back and explain to you how they feel about it and why. Having said that, I guess, again, I don't want to repeat all these things that have been said tonight, but I have, I am not in disagreement with any one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane, could you address the issue of how many vehicles the development would generate on Beals Avenue? Kyle Brooks has run out that it'll add three hundred cars to the road.
There's two hundred and sixty-four one-way trip ends, so that's one hundred and thirty-two round trips per day. Peak hour trips range from sixteen to twenty-two one-way trips in peak hours. Existing traffic.
I interrupted you just for a second because I know the original, those trips were based on thirty-nine.
Correct, it's less with thirty-six.
I did the math, just it would get it down from, it would drop it twenty trips, I believe.
Correct. And then existing trips that were out there, was already in peak hours, in the P.M. peak hour, there's about a hundred trips, so if we're adding twenty trips, twenty percent increase in traffic?
There's a thought, has anybody addressed what the railroad coming through there, the railroad tracks? Because they use that, especially in the summertime. I don't know how many trips they make a day. Four or five, but how is that going to affect traffic coming across there? Because the railroad, you know, goes through there.
It's very minimal. They maybe take like, yeah, three or four trips a day in the peak season, only summer season.
And they're at that spot for what, two minutes?
Yeah, they've got most.
It would prevent me from going up there.
Another thing I wanted to ask, that trail, was it sunset or sunrise?
Sunrise.
Okay, sorry, sunrise.
That's right.
That's what happens when you're a foreigner. So, is that, have they decided whether that's going to go down past along where the railroad is? Or I heard some talk about that coming up Beal, too.
Nothing's been finalized for that. I mean, it went to extend the Sunrise Trail, but the city has the recreational rail trail, the bike pad trail. That could get extended, but again, that's not, that's not quite finalized yet. But it wouldn't go up Beals, it would run along the railroad, yeah.
So I won't hold you to this, but is your opinion, your educated opinion, they'll go down the railroad track or they'll come up Beal? Because we already got a bunch of people up on Beal on quads now.
No, it would, the plan is if the engineering all works out and easements all work out, it would run along the railroad, not down Beals Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to point out, is someone on Mr. Brooks's?
Yeah, we go to Zoom app.
Okay, sorry, I didn't.
Anybody else in the audience? Okay, I'll go to Zoom.
Mark, you feel comfortable?
I'll try.
Click on attendees.
I have participants.
That works, yeah, participants. You see Steve Brooks, probably.
No.
Come do it.
Oh, Mr. Brooks, here we are.
Allow us all.
Yep.
Mr. Brooks?
Mr. Brooks?
Hello?
I'm going to ask him to unmute, which I've done. He's permitted to talk, but it's up to him to unmute.
Are you hearing me?
Yes.
Okay, I have a number of comments here. Couple of things that I've talked about, and both our previous filings and the previous meetings, we've asked for a number of things which we have been ignored on. And one of those, which has come up in space today, is the matter of the utilities. And we've asked that a fully qualified hydraulic engineering company come in and take a look at, in fact, what would happen with loading that, their utilities into our line. That's going on in that cross, short cross line out to High Street. To answer a question somebody raised earlier, yes, these lines loop around. And the question is, would that block everything else up or would it just flow out there? The simple answer is, instead of coming out here, they actually just cut across and cut into the High Street lines directly. But our question there, we've asked a hydraulic engine, fully qualified hydraulic engineering firm, take a look at that. And we know, as well stated by people today, we've got real problems on both the water and the sewer here on this street. The two items, you know, we presented this petition to you to deny this project on three grounds. The first ground being that it's going to be a physical failure, eighty percent probability that it's going to fail financially and the city's going, and we'll have to bail it out. That's not good for the taxpayers, it's not good smart thinking for the planning board. What you need to be aware of here is, and this I found out since I supplied this, what you need to be aware of is that, and this is public data on the census site, the owned home market in Ellsworth is saturated. Seventy percent of the people here own their own homes, only thirty percent rent. And in line with the work of the, in line of the work with the Pew Research, this says that, this says that the thirty percent is much smaller than they estimate the people who are really interested in their, really interested in owning, or in, I'm sorry, in renting places. They want to rent, they don't want to buy. And this is the market that this project is going to have to deal with. What it comes down to, and I'll go through the details of the calculation, but what it comes down to is it looks like the potential market for this project is just two hundred and eighty families. No matter what size you want to count them, you can count in all the big ones you want to count, you can count in all the non-qualified people you want to count, no matter how you count it, that's what it comes down to. And that just not, you know, he's going to talk, those people who prefer to rent, they're going to be talked into renting and talked into buying. That's a pretty small market. I pointed out here other reasons why, you know, their market is very truncated and very competitive, they can't offer the qualified buyers the help that these well-funded NGOs can offer for them. On the matter of the driveway, there are of course a number of waivers that you would have to issue in order to waive the, in order to waive the driveway, in order to permit the driveway in there. But I would want to point out that this traffic study, this hundred-page traffic study is irrelevant. And the reason it's irrelevant is because it's a linear horizontal tabletop model that deals only with the horizontal direction. And the problem, in fact, on both ends of Beals Avenue, the problem is vertical. What happens is, in the worst case, on the right turn from, from High Street onto Beals Avenue, there is no visibility of, any car making the turn has no visibility of anybody in that driveway. And the driveway people have no visibility of people making that turn. And you can, when you make the turn, you can't see anything because of the hood of the car. It's an absolute prime turn. And the other side of the fence is, it's very steep hill. So you're in a hard acceleration going up that hill. And I hear a lot of BS about just dragging your feet going up there. That isn't the case. And particularly in the winter, because they do such a poor job clearing the snow, you really got to hit that hill hard, with hard acceleration. And the important thing about that is that the model, that speeds aren't the issue here. The issue is acceleration. I'll take you back to your high school physics, force equals mass times acceleration. Even if the acceleration rate is only one foot per second per second, that's a three-thousand-pound car coming up there, and he's not going to see anybody exiting that driveway in time to stop. And our numbers say that it's likely to be somebody coming out of that driveway about once every five minutes. And so it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of just a time coincidence between people making, somebody making a turn down there and somebody coming out of the driveway. And they are going to get T-boned with a force of three thousand pounds, which is more than enough to penetrate into the driver compartment. So I just, from safety standpoint, I see no way that you can waive enough to approve that driveway. And they're only a couple hundred feet from the grain store or the feed store, whichever you want to call it, and there's a driveway all the way in there. So, and that would be a lot less driveway than they're, than they're building right now, cost-wise. So it seems to me that, that they should take a serious look at going out that driveway, which puts them out, Merrill Lane, which puts them out to a full channelized traffic light on High Street, very, very safe exit. Yes, they might have to clip across Alan's property out there, but I kind of suspect that Alan would be willing to cut it right away, deal with him, particularly if it gave him some access into that end of his own property. Okay. Needless to say, I could talk a lot longer here, but the bottom line is this, physically, this project is irresponsible. And secondly, safety-wise, it's irresponsible and it has better alternatives from a safety standpoint than using the present thing. I don't know what they're getting in mind with this crosswalk thing. The Beals Avenue is just two paved lanes. There's no shoulders, no sidewalks. There's no place to go with a crosswalk. A crosswalk would put you onto Sergeant's Lawn, that's all. It wouldn't put you anywhere safe, put you onto Sergeant's Lawn. And of course, they can't plow snow across there either. So, you know, I think there's a lot of misinformation or misideas around that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Is there anybody else?
No.
Well, that concludes the audience also. Then I will close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I had a question.
Well, one more thing that the developer had a request for that I'm going to bring up was the material of the sidewalk. The state's ordinance says there's a preference for concrete sidewalks. And the developer's asking to do asphalt sidewalks. I know, yeah, the city has plans to redo Beals Avenue and include sidewalks. We would do concrete sidewalks, so staff would suggest the requirement for concrete sidewalks to remain the standard. But the developer has a request for asphalt sidewalks. I don't know if I'd go into that in more detail, reasons why.
I can just state, you know, this is a, it's a tight project financially. We're trying to, as I said at the last meeting, we're trying to build something and sell it for less than it costs to build it, right? So it's not a, you know, there's not a lot of wiggle room in the budget. And we've been told by our estimating C.M., construction manager, that the difference between, for the, that the difference between concrete and asphalt sidewalk would be double in cost, which, given the length of sidewalk, is a significant, so that's why we're asking for the change.
Do you have a dollar figure on that, for any change?
I can, I don't, off the top of my head.
But this will be a private sidewalk, won't it?
Correct.
The curbing would be concrete?
I don't know what is currently.
Wouldn't have to be. Not being given to see.
Could be granite.
Or they'd be wiredged in concrete or is it a preference?
The way the ordinance is written currently, it says concrete sidewalks are And the way the ordinance is written currently, it says concrete sidewalks are preferred.
But not required.
But not required.
So in reality, they don't even have to ask, right?
No, I mean, like, it's preferred, so they should present either concrete or have an, like, argument ready to request otherwise, so.
What was the, the plan to keep these roads private?
Yes.
Forever?
Yes.
Not to turn them over to the city?
Ultimately turning them over to the homeowners association. Right. So I don't have, or, you know, our development team doesn't have a long-term say in that, but that would be our intention in forming this, the homeowners association.
I mean, the issue with, with concrete is, I think more from the city's standpoint, that if the city's going to plow and maintain them, they prefer concrete because it lasts longer. If it's left to the developer or the homeowners association to repair asphalt curbs, I mean, you have to deal with the financing in the long, in the long run. I think it'd be smart to spend the money for concrete because asphalt curbs don't last. But I guess that's a decision that you guys have to make.
Have we determined whether the, the curb is going to be concrete or granite, or?
On the plans in the application, I think we showed granite curbs, granite curb detail, but I'm not sure if that's been, if that's the final decision.
That was what was spec'd from our CM. It's more just the building of the forms for the, for the length of that sidewalk, for the concrete portion.
And did you say the curbs were, I thought you just said the curbs are going to be granite?
Potentially.
Right. So, so it's more the forms for the concrete, for the concrete portion.
Okay, you got me confused.
Of the sidewalk.
Of the sidewalks, yeah, excuse me.
So, what are the sidewalks? Are the curbs going to be concrete, granite, or asphalt?
As proposed in the plans, they're granite.
Oh, okay.
That should solve the concrete problem.
Okay, that takes care of the curb problem. But now you're just asking that the sidewalk itself would be asphalt instead of concrete?
Correct.
Okay.
So the wear and tear of the sidewalk come from either literally use of the sidewalk and/or the plowing that occurs adjacent to the sidewalk. So the, on the plowing, from the plowing perspective, the sidewalk is protected by a granite curb.
Correct.
And in terms of the usage of it, it's relatively low in the sense that it's not a, for pedestrians, it's not a through route at all.
That would be my understanding.
So, much as I like sidewalks everywhere, I mean, I personally okay with asphalt sidewalks, per se. But this is me, sorry Matt.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I don't know, I don't want to complicate it because it might be a pull-up, but if you swapped out the granite curbing for a concrete slipform curbing, and the concrete sidewalks, would the costs bounce out? Or is there a reason specifically to choose the concrete curbing to pair with asphalt sidewalk?
Um, I guess, we, I'm, I can't answer that specifically because I'm not the CM and he's not here. I think the, we would like to maintain the flexibility of, I mean, I agree with all of you that ultimately we would love to have concrete sidewalk. It's, it's a, it's a, just a cost issue and, you know, if, if there's money that's in the budget, you know, in these projects, you have a wish list. As you go along, if there's a funds there, you put it back into the project and take care of your wish list items. So this would be, you know, determined ultimately by that, but we'd like to maintain the flexibility.
Well, I guess, I gotta say where Matt's going, I mean, I, I guess if it's a choice between granite and asphalt versus concrete and concrete, I mean, does, does the cost come out the same, or, I mean, be more than happy for you to put in granite the whole way.
Yeah, I thought granite curbs were way more expensive than concrete, aren't they?
They're very expensive.
Granite, the granite curbing, yeah, right. And, and both of them are more expensive than asphalt, but asphalt obviously gets gouged and beat up by plows.
Right.
And then so does concrete to a lesser extent, but.
Well, so does everything.
If you're happy putting in.
Spends a lot of the plow driver, right?
I guess if you're happy putting in granite curbs, I guess I wouldn't mind asphalt sidewalks. I guess that discussion, you could have that discussion amongst yourself and with the city.
And if it's, and if it's a sugar suggested or whatever, it's not clear that it needs a waiver then, right?
I don't think it's particularly a waiver, but it's a discussion because there's a preference for concrete, so.
Okay, well, and that's fine, I mean, but, but there's no waiver required for.
No, because it's not a steadfast requirement.
Exactly.
Any other issues from staff?
It's not really an issue. Do you know the timeline of the water pressure tests to be performed?
The thing, because we've just determined that they need to start construction, they need to get a water line in up to a hydrant so that they can run the test on that hydrant. So I think where they still have approvals required, it's tough to, tough to put a date on that, they don't have a contractor picked out, so they, to be determined.
Who's done the previous water test? Did you say something, you had?
The Water District provided pressures.
Yeah.
Uh, and then those pressures were sent to Woodard and Curran.
Woodard and Curran.
Yeah.
So those were the hydraulic engineers that did the test. So Woodard and Curran actually have done the test as hydraulic engineers.
No, I think they will perform the tests.
They, they ran a model, so they gave us like a, using real-world pressures, they gave us a theoretical pressure at the connection point.
Yeah, and they probably would do the same for whatever the future tests.
I would imagine.
They're basing everything on residual and static pressures that's available at the time, that the city gave them.
Right.
So it's actually, those are the hydraulic engineers that are doing it, it's not the city that's, they're just, the city's providing them the, the information and they're doing the calculations for the city, so. I mean, if the project is approved, you still have to approach the council for the TIF discussion. How soon would you anticipate that happening?
We would be hoping to do that this year, I mean, later, later in this fall.
Looks like you have something.
Fall, winter, winter.
Yeah, and I just don't know if like, you're not going to start construction until you have to verify the TIF.
Correct, yeah.
I was, I'm trying to think in my mind if there's a way to have the water pressure test completed prior to like construction, but it doesn't sound like you can get the accurate for like the furthest back hydrants, but to be able to run tests at least for residents of Beale's Avenue and have that information, you know, prior to, like, prior to the TIF conversation.
Well, I guess that would be up to the developer to decide whether they, they got approval, if they wanted to put in the water line before getting the TIF. I mean, if they don't get the TIF from the city, they'll be looking for other financing, but that's helping the arrows to, what will happen? So I guess, I guess it would depend on the developer if they wanted to put the water line in to do the water test prior to all the financing coming in, in line. I mean, that would be up to them.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you, you would, right? You wouldn't have the money before the TIF conversation.
No, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars, they, yeah, so. And it would also just then leave a potential water line running to nowhere, so I wouldn't recommend.
I didn't suspect you'd want to.
So I think we'll just have to work the condition carefully.
Can, can we, you know, with relative to a condition that goes in a motion, can we leave it somewhat, because, because there's great care that's needed, can we leave it kind of open-ended in a way, in a motion, so that, you know, you and they, you know, come to agreement on the language, on the specific language? Or does it have to be everything here and now?
It has, has to come from you.
Sorry?
Has to come from the board.
Because it would have to be on the site plan.
Right. This is the thought.
Any other questions? Any other comments from staff?
No. How does it?
Do you want to try the motion?
Except for the conditions, you have, you have condition language here? Let's see, yeah.
We also have a question of the way.
So, so that all in one could be the, excuse me while we negotiate this. Where does it start here?
The developer be required, I guess.
To perform a, okay. So this is from.
Those are actually from bigger engineer.
Yeah, from engineer to you. Can we have him look at that language to see if that works?
So we did that already.
I'm sorry?
He has a letter.
Yeah, right, it's the, it's the, um, it was the paragraph that begins, it was noted.
Yes, so John was talking about it earlier and I read it.
Right.
Yes.
And we're good with that language?
So, yeah, if you take from, you know, essentially to alleviate those concerns and just take that out and just say that you propose.
The developer.
Be required to perform.
Okay.
So you read that till the end essentially.
Okay.
At the, for the condition of approval, and here it just mentions the water department, but the fire department should also be included to review the water pressure test.
Okay, so that is an add-on to.
What's written here.
That, what's typed in there, okay.
And then, you know, after the fact.
So it's subject to review by the water department and fire department?
Yes, and so, you know, after the test has been completed, if it's found that there is an effect, negative impact on, you know, this Beale's Avenue neighborhood, I would say the entire street of Beale's Avenue and the development that drops below the twenty PSI.
He's lost me, right?
I know. Let's just do it, you want to do it?
Let me read you what I wrote down, just basically.
Ooh, ooh, he's going to make this motion.
No, I'm not. You can add, so if the development water usage has an adverse effect on the existing Beale's Avenue residential homes that reduces the minimum pressure requirement for residential use and/or fire protection use, then LB Ellsworth will correct the problem in conjunction with the Ellsworth Water Department and Ellsworth Fire Department.
So are you suggesting that, that language be amended to this language?
You can use however you want.
Let's see here. Yeah, but see, this has the, this has the testing specification, and this has the kind of an output set.
It sounds like you should read what's in.
Instead of putting in a specific amount, I just put the minimum pressure.
Right, yeah, 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 and that's, yeah, so if we, if we take the paragraph in the letter. And then the paragraph that he's just written, we should be home free.
Well, I think you'll have a pretty good condition.
Exactly.
Can I ask a question?
No. Yeah, sure.
Don't throw a wrench in it.
I'm just wondering if the condition should also state where the testing happens, that it's at fire hydrants in the area of Beale's Ave?
It would have to be, it would have to be the fire hydrant on Beale's Avenue and, and fire hydrant in your development.
Correct.
After the water extension is constructed.
I asked, just the way in which I interpreted that was at, at each individual household? Like if, if a local resident came and provided testing to show that the water pressure was too low in their house, I, I don't think, but there was then subsequent testing done at the fire hydrant to show that the, the pressure in the main was sufficient, I don't think that we would be responsible for fixing the water pressure.
Well, I think, I think you're fine, and I think Woodard and Curran would agree that you put your hydrant in and you test the hydrant, you test the water system on Beale's Avenue. If you test the furthest hydrant on Beale's Avenue, the furthest hydrant here, and you come up with a residual pressure of greater than twenty, then you should be fine, okay? That's, that's the, and that's how it's done as far as how they determine whether they're providing you the pressure in the home or not. I don't know what the line size is on Beale's Avenue, but the whole idea is that if you can create or maintain a greater than twenty PSI at the hydrant, definitely, because that's a six-inch minimum, you're looking at a two-inch or maybe even an inch up there because of the age of those homes, you're going to get twenty pounds pressure. Twenty pounds is not a lot. I have the same issue at my home on Maddox Avenue, and it's right at twenty. And so, I mean, it's what they provide. So, but it, it's based upon the furthest hydrants between residual and static pressures. And Woodard and Curran can verify that based upon the numbers that you provided them when you did that.
So we want to add in the stuff about the hydrants in here, though?
Yeah, they need to test it on Beale's Avenue. Not, not, not High Street or Main Street.
Yeah, yeah, but you want to say existing hydrants, too.
Yeah, yes.
So in development, usage has an adverse effect on existing, to reduce the minimum... So where do we add in about the hydrants, I guess, in this language? Or is it over here? Oh, so, uh, right here, test on onsite hydrant, can we specify which ones?
Yeah, it's already in there.
Is that, is that sufficient for you?
I believe so, it's right in that, whatever that, whatever that is, right there.
Okay, so that's sufficient for you, what you said?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, so we're back to the paragraph from here, this magical paragraph that's appeared in front of me, okay? And that, it addresses the, um, condition.
It's, yeah, the condition for the water.
It's just a condition for approval. Something else go in there? About, about the, do we grant the waivers as well in?
I think it's.
The motion, or is that separate?
I think, I was about to say, but I didn't want to interrupt what you had going on. I think you should go over the waivers first.
Okay.
And then, yeah, do the.
Okay, so which all waivers are we talking about?
Talking about the lighting standards.
Request a waiver for the lighting standards, the sidewalk, to allow sidewalk entrance at entrance, it's to meet rural area standard, request waiver of light trespass onto adjacent rural property, how do you want to phrase those?
So we're not, I don't think we're granting the waiver that's listed there because we're not changing to the alternate lighting plan. It's essentially granting them a waiver for the hook candles necessary to light the sidewalk, but they'll be keeping the fence and the three-foot baller lighting, so.
Are you understanding all this? Just wondered, perhaps old age had kept, kept up on me here. So, let's deal with these one by one, so they want a request for the waiver of two Ellsworth, oh, the lighting standards, okay, request waiver to allow the sidewalk at entrance to meet.
I would, I mean, you change the phrase and just say that they're requesting a waiver from the lighting standards to, I have to look up what the exact lighting required for the sidewalk is the number, but the, to lessen the required lighting on the sidewalk using three-foot baller lights and screen fence. And just grant that waiver.
Putting in fifty percent of that.
Or fifty percent, yeah.
I don't suppose in that pile of paper you have an actual suggested language?
I don't, I can work on one if you'd like.
I, I think I'd like that, personally like that a lot.
Okay.
I mean, I guess you could really just phrase it as a waiver to decrease the number from the lighting standards, decrease the number of three-foot ballers along the entrance sidewalk by hat. I mean, I guess you could really just phrase it as a waiver to decrease the number, from the lighting standards, decrease the number of three-foot ballards along the entrance sidewalk by half.
Okay, say it again and slowly.
Request, uh, for waiver from the lighting standards.
Okay, wait a second. Okay, go ahead.
To decrease the number of.
Yeah?
Three-foot baller lights.
By half?
Yes.
And that doesn't affect the fencing or screening or anything like that?
No, the fencing would not.
Okay, so the first motion then is to grant the waiver from the Ellsworth lighting standard to the, and decrease the number of three-foot ballards, baller lights by half.
Yes.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Okay, next?
We need a waiver from city traffic standards to state standards.
Yes, you can, you just say granting the waiver for site distance to comply with, um, main state DOT standards for site distance, as opposed to the city's ordinance standards.
So it's intersection, site distance is official phrase, right?
Driveway side distance.
Driveway side. Okay, driveway, right. Granted, so we grant a waiver from the city standards for driveway site distance, uh, in favor of the state standards.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
Is that okay?
No, just tighten it up a little bit.
What's that?
I'll just tighten it up a little.
Okay, and how did you do that?
I would just say that you, you're making a motion to grant the waiver for driveway site distance. I would just reverse the order really from the city's standards that instead comply with main state DOT standards.
Okay, so we're, here's the, and if I get this right, then we'll just make that the motion, otherwise we'll try it again. So making a motion to grant the waiver from the city standards for driveway site distance, uh, to, and to comply, but to comply with the standards of state DOT.
Perfect.
Close enough?
Yeah. I'll second that. All in favor?
Next?
Those are the two.
Are we down to the water?
That's a condition, not a waiver.
Oh, right, sorry, I'm sorry.
That would be in a motion itself.
Okay, so that's it? The two waivers?
The two waivers.
We good? We good over there? Next up, uh, this is a, uh, okay, so I have, the condition has to be wrapped into the motion, right? Okay, so the motion is that we approve the final plan of a major used site development, a major subdivision entitled Beals Avenue, multifamily housing development for applicant owner LB Ellsworth LLC, with the condition that the developer be required to perform a pressure and flow test at onsite hydrant after the water extension is constructed. This will afford the water district and/or their engineer an opportunity to review real-world pressure data, which can be evaluated to determine if the proposed development requires artificial means to increase water pressure. These measures would be developed and coordinated with the water district for the water department, or is it a district?
The department.
Water department?
And.
For their approval during a future.
And fire department.
Oh, I'm fire department, sorry. Uh, for their approval during a future design construction phrase. If the development, if the development water usage has an adverse effect on existing Beals Avenue residential homes that reduces the minimum pressure requirement for residential use and for the fire protection, LB Ellsworth and, well, okay, will correct the problem in construction with.
In conjunction.
In, I'm sorry, in conjunction, sorry, in conjunction with the Ellsworth Water Department, Ellsworth Fire Department. Happy?
Can we have to specify any of the, just the hydrants on Beals Avenue?
He said he was good with his language.
Let me just reread it. It says onsite hydrant, so I would just specify also hydrant on Beals Avenue. Hydrants on Beals Avenue.
I'm sorry?
I would add in, it just specifically says onsite hydrant, so I'd say and hydrants on Beals Avenue.
And hydrant, okay. So, so move the friendly amendment there.
Um, and do we want what the 12-month period after?
Yes, because that protects them from other stuff. Uh, where do we want to put the 12-month?
12-month period from completion, from occupancy, from.
From occupancy, you mean?
Is that first occupancy or full?
Well.
Final occupancy. Eh, that might.
That could be a long time.
That could be.
Yeah, I know, that's why I asked the question.
I mean, how long? I'll probably, I would just say it's going to be prior to certificate of occupancy. They're going to use in phases, so certificate of occupancy for phase one. That'd be about 12 months.
So 12 months after you're taking certificate of occupancy.
So where are we with the 12 months?
So we could do the testing after every phase.
And there are three phases, right? Do you really want to do that? I'm sure they don't, but.
It's up to you, but it's, you, you could require it after every phase to protect us.
I think it would be prudent to.
Okay, so we could, I'm sorry.
I think it would be prudent to have that stipulation for, after all 36 units are.
Can you guys live with that?
I guess, is it a year, a year-long period after the last, I guess I'm unclear where we are.
After the.
I think it would be.
Construction of the phase is complete, that's when the clock starts, right?
I think the period, you want the period to start, if you're not going to do it between every phase, to start after.
The last one?
The last.
Certificate of occupancy.
So there's the year, I mean, so if it happens during the construction of the other phases and there's like a decrease in water pressure, the same, the condition still applies, but they get to phase three without problems. But then a year after phase three is completed, an issue does arise.
So they're testing after each phase?
Well, I don't, so I don't think it's necessary, you know, if an issue arises during the first two phases, they're going to have to remedy it based on this condition. And so it's really just the extended, it's really an extended protection for both the residents and the developer, that, you know, the year after phase three is completed, that you start the clock.
Okay, so.
So I would say what you've said so far is good, and I would just add that, you know, this condition will expire.
Okay, at the very end.
12 months after.
Final occupancy.
Okay, and.
If you have all your hydrants in place, is it not possible to simulate the maximum water use from 36 residential units using the hydrants in place on site?
If, it, what you're saying is correct. If you have all the hydrants in place in your development, okay? And you test, you should be able, like he says, you should be able to simulate.
Simulate by.
Residual and static pressures being used between Beals Avenue and your development.
Now, technically might be what's correct, but I think if they'd like to make the residents, their neighbors feel better, they may want to wait until the project's finished.
I, I agree. I mean, you know, so you can do a test after everything's done to determine what's going on.
Could you not do an initial test?
I think you need to do an initial, I think you, yeah.
Then at the end of things, do another test to assure the neighborhood that it's okay to.
So initial test would be done when?
When they get the water lines in.
Okay, so with, with initial testing occurring when the water lines are, are in place and a follow-up test at the end of.
Final occupancy.
Final occupancy.
12 months after.
12 months after. And if you ask me to read that back, I can't do it. Are we good? I mean, that, that covered the.
I, I think the idea is, you know, if you put phase one in and you build a building, you're going to have to have water. You're going to have to have the hydrant. In fact, by ordinance, you have to have fire protection, water supply onsite when building construction starts. So you have to have that in, okay? So when phase one is in and you put your hydrants, get all that ready to go and test. You do the same thing for phase two and so on and so forth. But by ordinance, you have got to have that fire protection, water supply available. If it shows up that it's not there, then you know you're going to have to go from there. But that's by ordinance, unless you guys have changed it. Okay.
Happy?
Yeah. Well, I think the, I think you have everything in the condition that you need to have, yeah.
What's that?
I think you have everything in the condition that you would need to have, yes.
You did a good job.
Go.
You understand, just so that gets down on the site plan.
Yeah, I can type that up and send it to them, so it's clear.
So that guarantees basically, I mean fundamentally, what that does is it guarantees that the water pressure will not be degraded by this development. I mean, right?
Exactly.
Short answer, right? And if it does get degraded at all, then it's fixed by you guys.
It's degraded along the same way?
Yes.
Yep.
That's implicit, I think.
Well, it's also in the condition.
Could she be recognized or not?
If it's a court question, ma'am.
I have a quick question. The question is, what I'm hearing is you are going to allow this project without listening to any of the residents. Is that correct? That's my question.
We have a motion before the board, we're about to vote on it. You made a motion, I'll second it. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? That's unanimous.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yo. I think we're still in session here.
Thank you.
I've got a question for you, real quick. I know we're still in session. Can I do this? So, if you don't mind, am I all right to do that?
Can you do it fast?
I'm just going to ask them a question on the lighting plan.
It's a little late to ask a question.
Well, no, it's not. It's not, we're not going to deal, we're not going to change anything.
All right.
I'll talk to you later.
There you go.
We'll do it one-on-one.
Okay.
I know where you live.
You want to watch that?
There you go, staff comments.
Uh, yes, um, so we have, um, two, uh, seats that are up for renewal. So Rick, your term expires. Would you like to continue to serve on the board for that?
I don't know, I may want to reconsider after some of this shit.
He says yes.
That was official, wasn't it? Yeah, I'm okay.
All right. And then, John, your seat's also up for renewal, um, even though you're new, but the seat just happens to have the term expire, so. Uh, would you serve to, to your term as an alternate?
What about me?
No, you're not.
What, you planning on leaving? Going to Portugal?
Um, then a comp plan update, next month, the consultants will be coming to the planning board to give you guys an update on the process so far, where the plan is at. John and Rick are all the steering committees, so they're pretty up to date, but for the rest of the board, the consultants will be coming to do a presentation and provide details on the policies and recommendations that are currently being considered for the comprehensive plan. Also have the housing study. Um, there's currently been a housing, like visual preference survey out for different zones, for types of housing people want to see in the different zones. And then you can share your housing stories, probably not applicable, applicable for all of you, but if you've moved to Ellsworth or want to move to Ellsworth, talking about how difficult it is to find housing. You can share those all online through the comp plan website, it's a shared website for the housing study. And then, I think that's really it for those two. So, I'm good.
So I have a comment, question for you.
Okay.
Okay. On the lighting plan for this project.
Yeah.
Okay. Why did we grant a waiver when they show on their lighting plan that the sidewalks were in compliance with the standard? I mean, literally, it shows the maximum, average, min, max, et cetera, and it shows that it's in compliance.
Yes, and so it was, but so the reason we granted it was because the lights were so close to the neighboring property.
Yeah.
That even if the fence is there, there may be slats in the fence, that push lighting through, and his main concern was that lighting was going to flood onto his property.
I see that, but according to the illuminance chart, it doesn't show that it does.
Right, but the reality of a light.
What the, what the computer model shows and what the reality of what the fence does may be different.
And that sidewalk's not going to get heavy enough traffic for the full lighting.
So in other words, what you're saying, we can't go by what they've given us for information.
No, it's a computer model, that's what we require.
I probably didn't bring you. No, I did.
I have a problem with that. I've always had a problem with the lighting standard.
Yeah, I mean, we do need to fix it.
Anyway.
Usually we grant the waiver. Most people request to be dark sky compliant, and that's usually the waiver that we grant.
All right. Are you going to get all the? I'll shut up. Whatever you need to get to the council for extending terms and promoting.
I mean, I'd be involved in that, I'm sure, but I, we haven't even really had, you mean the tip.
Well, no, I'm talking about, I don't think Mike technically has been elevated to full.
Yeah, I will get that information.
You have it, I have it? I haven't, he hasn't taken it to the council yet.
Mike has been elevated.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
He got elevated when these two were brought on as alternates. So the only difference, Vince hasn't been elevated yet.
Okay.
So he'll be elevated.
And then you got to renew.
And then they have to re-recognize him, yeah.
Yep.
So I didn't like to recheck me.
It's too late.
And, and I got one other question for both of you.
Okay.
There was a testimony that made concerning the sewer line test.
Yeah.
And the gentleman stated that he got a letter following that test saying he needed to get insurance. Are any of you familiar with what that's about?
Yeah, go ahead.
I know this is the first I'd heard of that.
Oh, there was a, there was a letter that went out that had to do with whether your insurance, at least the one I got, covered backups from sewers.
From the city?
Yeah. Uh, I think so. Becau, well, because it was, you were able to put a rider on your home insurance to cover that. And you had to do that. I mean, you had to opt-in to do that, to get that coverage.
I've never received the letter.
It may, it may be, it may be insurance company dependent.
Okay.
So it may be, have come from the insurance company versus from the city. What came from the city was that thing about the water testing.
That I got.
That failed or whatever.
I'm worried about that.
Yeah, but that's what, that's what the, you know, your coverage, it had to do with, um, yeah.
I just.
What's covered, what's not covered.
I just wasn't sure what that letter was about, if any of you.
You're making fun of it all.
No, I mean wastewater didn't have comments during TRT.
Okay.
I think that's your one.
I'm good. I'll be quiet.
John's going to start apologizing really soon.
They'll say something to do with motion to adjourn.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
No.
I made a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Now you, now you make a motion.